Uh, no, he's not.
Oh, what happened?
He's worked a lot of hours the last three nights with salting and sanding.
Okay.
He needs to get some sleep, he said. He texted me early today.
He's home in bed. Good man.
He's none nights right now.
Okay, well, six thirty-two, we can start. We've got a quorum.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we have an agenda. This, uh, meeting is digitally recorded and broadcast live tonight, and then it's also, uh, digitally recorded so it can be broadcast later. We post it on YouTube that other, uh, citizens can catch up with it at a later date. So, I hope you have all your makeup on and everything's ready for the, for the TV cameras.
Do I look handsome? Pretty.
We had a lot of work for you. We did a lot of work on you. All right, call order. Public hearing on the scenic road application on Lot four C.
There you are.
There you are.
Thank you very much for your help.
We have a scenic road application. Is this why you're here?
Yep.
Okay. Then we have an A and R application. That's why you're here. We'll try to get the public's work done so you guys can go all go home and have dinner. And then we'll plow through the rest of this agenda. Uh, we have a public hearing later on fees, but that doesn't really require, uh, there's no petition or applicant or anything, so. All right, you want to start the public hearing on the scenic road application?
Aye.
I think I need a motion to enter to, uh, what do we do? We, we, uh, not suspend, but we stop the-
Regularly.
Temporarily stop the regular meeting and enter into a public hearing. So, that's the motion.
I'll make a motion to enter a public hearing for the scenic road application submitted for Lot four C on Hillville Road to remove trees and a section of stone wall for installation of a driveway owned by John Al- Alwell, I believe in his way.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. If you care to, you can come to the table or otherwise explain what's happening.
Oh, we're gonna be building a house there eventually, but we need to get access to the lot. So, we need a driveway.
Okay.
Right, but-
All of you have this application in front of you.
Oh, okay. Okay.
The documents to that application is the plan that he submitted, as well as, um, the report from the tree warden with regards to how many trees of what diameter are going to need to be cut in order to make that plan reality. Also, the tree warden said that he would not be here for the treating, uh, this hearing, but he has no opinion to offer regarding the removal of those trees. So, it is up to the planning board to know if he was going to be here to offer a-
Does no opinion mean no objection?
He said he had no opinion. That's what he said. It's on, uh, page three of your packet.
I have a question, which is these trees, they describe it, have you seen the letter? Eleven oaks-
Yes, sir.
Between six inches and thirty-six inches. Uh, white oak and a hemlock. My question is, are those all within the right of way? Or is that, uh, I mean, within the entry to the drive or does it go up further in the drive?
Are they, I think, I'm looking at the little map. The question might be phrased, are they all within the thirty-foot opening?
Yeah.
Everything that is, there's thirteen trees is put the thirty-foot opening. And even like the stone wall is technically on my side of the land, the taking everything. So, when we add the stone wall, the base of the stone wall is about three feet onto my property versus- It was honestly only about ten of those trees on the outside of the stone wall, but I just figured, ask for it. If all of them are, they're gonna be impactful, we'll cut the wall.
What's the stone wall like? How high?
It's mostly rubble, honestly. There isn't much left of it.
Yeah.
Okay.
And there's quite an elevation change from the existing road to where we have to get into the lot. That's why we need such an area to make it so we can see in both directions to get out safely.
Did you take a look, Tom?
I didn't drive by.
I believe Francois did though.
Yeah, I do live on that same street.
Right.
And, uh, it, it, it's, it's as you've described it, so I'm testing.
Right.
So, I, I, I'm attesting to that.
Yeah. I have no objections, Tom.
Anybody had any objection?
I'll make a motion to accept the application and approve it.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Dennis?
Congratulations, David. Thank you. I'm on sixty-five.
I'd love to try this on the roof.
Um, thank you for coming in. Thank you for doing the process correctly and gets everybody involved and informed.
Can I make a statement? I believe this is the first formal application we've had of this. Vinny was the first, but he knew about it. Well, the first person coming into town is what I meant.
Yeah, we're, we're working diligently to try to get people to honor the scenic road, um, requirements because we think tree-lined streets and rock walls and all that stuff makes, makes this town characteristically rural and, and that's a thing that, uh, our population has always voted for, the rural.
And this has been, this regulation's been in place for quite some time, but nobody was really, nobody knew about it. So, this is the first, so I'm glad it worked out this way.
Yeah. Thank you very much for doing it.
Thanks for coming in.
So, we're all set?
Yep.
Good luck with the little one.
Thank you.
And your house.
John, how long has you guys lived in Clinton?
I've been in Clinton for ten, twelve years.
You have any of the Whitneys?
Not really, 'cause-
You're lucky.
Yeah.
On TV, no less. Oh, my goodness.
Don't know all my brother-in-laws.
Oh, all the family, all right.
Walton-Hobbeson.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'll see you back.
Take care.
Thank you.
Look forward to processing your building plans.
Yeah, it'll be a little while.
I hear ya.
Okay, next, uh, A and R application. Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Line up as wish, or whatever's easy.
This is the one we looked at last time, yes?
This was a, uh, application to, uh, take a large lot and make it into two lots, one with the house on it and one with the solar system on it, if I remember correctly.
Correct, yeah. We needed an updated, uh, letter of authority, which I have.
Yes, because you are dealing with an estate.
Yes, yeah. And then the second check.
Yes, this, when you carve off one, you make two.
Yep.
So, we get a double hit on that.
And I have the original here. That's a copy you can use.
No, but I can put this on the chair and then you have some more room.
Should we have the original or should we have?
Nope.
As long as we've seen the original, it should be okay.
Okay.
Are you the gentleman I talked to last week on the phone about the water leak?
No.
No?
This is a different property. This is the, uh, solar property on Gardner Road going down towards Gardner.
I was thinking Williams Road, I'm sorry.
It's on the, it's on the east side or the right as you go down.
Oh, okay.
And it was owned by, um, Mr.-
Tom Moore.
Tom Moore and his wife.
Yep.
Right next to that.
And, uh, backs up Gardner Road, he goes up to the railroad tracks.
And it backs up in Newton's property too.
Yeah.
Right.
Yes, it says-
I was thinking Williams Road, I'm sorry.
And, uh, Tom Moore passed away.
Yes, just recently.
Yeah, I, I always thought he was a vigorous guy.
No.
No?
Doesn't make any difference how big the-
I must have missed, missed the-
I've known Tom for many years.
He was thin.
Since those were, we needed those instead. Thank you.
I'll tell you later. Nice guy though.
Yes, he came in one night. We were-
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Let's pull this over here somewhere.
He was, um, he left his property to his niece, I think.
And I'm mixed up as to who I'm talking about. I, I, I must not know Mr. Moore.
Tom was known for having Model T hordes.
And his dad owned the-
He was farming at Bent's.
That's what it was, yeah.
Yeah.
And per your request, here is the copy of, our copy of where the lease area is for the solar field.
Oh, so this is one, okay, great.
These are ours.
Here, see it?
Short, looking things in the level.
You gotta, you gotta turn that so that the road is the same orientation.
Right.
That's this. So, it's up in that corner and, uh, they have designated what they call a lease area, including the access road and the poles-
Mm-hmm.
And the actual solar farm.
Which looks good. That's what it looks like.
It's amazing, isn't it?
So, this lot's gonna remain in single ownership? There's leasing.
Yep.
Got it.
And the other lot can be marketed as sold or given away or whatever.
Actually, uh, Tom's will basically said what to do with the property and who got what.
Mm-hmm, good.
So, the, his caretaker, he was never married, and his caretaker received the house. His niece receives the other property.
Oh, okay.
And I'm, I've gotten, I'm mixed up. I don't know Mr. Moore.
Oh, okay.
He was never, he was never married.
No, he, I'm, I'm thinking of a couple, I think, that own the other solar that posts up against this.
Oh, the Newtons. That was, uh, Bob and Kathy.
Kathy, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
That's him. Yep. All right, so-
So, the-
We oughta go down our planning board, uh-
Checklist?
A and R checklist.
So, this is a one acre.
It's actually four acres.
Oh, four acres. I see it there, okay.
Hundred seventy-four thousand square feet.
One, okay, four acres, yeah. And two hundred feet of land.
I have the list here. Would you like me to read it?
Sure.
Property boundaries, north point, date and scale.
Wish we did find that the last-
Yep, yes.
Last, last week when we looked at it.
Mm-hmm.
Yep. Name of record owner, name of registered land surveyor, and the Worcester Registry of Deeds book and page reference of conveyance to record owner.
Can you point those out to you?
Sure, come on out.
Oh, that'd be great.
Since you know where they are.
I, I know a lot of-
Everybody know Brian Zuck? He's the author of this topic.
Hi, Brian.
I, I, I know a lot of the planning boards. They'll take the plan out and, and they'll do it.
Scratch our heads.
And we'll say, I got it here.
Right, right.
This is, uh, book and page. Oh, I, I got it.
Right. Well, if you could point it out, it'd be great.
Help us out, right.
Uh, area of each lot.
Yep. Area here and area there.
Sufficient data to determine the location, direction and length of every street and way line, lot line and boundary line, monuments or references necessary to establish these lines in the ground.
Okay, you got stone walls here, you got a, yeah, brass disc here, you got a highway bound here, another stone wall here, wall, wall, wall.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Pretty straightforward.
The, this is, is a curve and, and the computer spits it out here as opposed to courses here, just for your education.
Where practical boundary lines of contiguous and adjacent land, I am so sorry. Where practical boundary lines of contiguous and adjacent land and names of owners thereof as determined from the most recent tax list.
I've got the address right here.
Okay, location of all permanent monuments properly identified.
Yes.
That's what we did.
Draw bounds.
Right.
Draw stone walls.
Location, names and present width of non-public, private ways of letting the property.
It's, it's public, well.
Mm-hmm.
Suitable space to record the endorsement of the board approval.
Yep.
Not required and the signatures, so.
I feel like a stewardess.
Yes. We appreciate it.
Can I have my refreshment?
Zoning classification and location of any zoning district boundaries that may lie within the locus of the plan.
There are no district boundaries, but the classifications for zoning is here.
Yeah, so that-
Setbacks.
Residential, agricultural.
In the case of the creation of a new lot, the remaining land area and frontage of the land in the ownership of the applicant shall be shown. Location of all existing buildings, including setback and side and rear yard designations.
Okay, that's zoning, the zoning designation. This is, house has been there for a long time and that's, then he's got a little workshop out back.
Um, location and area of any wetlands on the lots being created by the plan, including the lot being created.
Two, two, two different wetland areas and I've got, this is the area that's on Lot one and then this plus this makes up the area for that parcel there, or that area of wetlands there.
And our approval does not constitute compliance with zoning requirements for building purposes.
Oops, what was that? Wait.
Yeah, that's it, isn't it?
Can you spell this now, Brian?
Yep.
Yeah, it's right there.
Okay.
Endorsement does not constitute a determination of compliance with, yep.
I, I, I can't, I can't always read upside down.
Yep.
You've got it though.
Those are the thirteen items in our A and R list.
Great.
And when we sign it off, you'll register?
Yes, yes.
And then, uh, we give three, we have three copies here. We'll sign them. I think one goes to the assessors.
Would make sense.
Yeah, we gotta get taxes.
The assessors and the planning board are the only people that really should have it.
Right.
Or have need of it, but.
Sometimes the town clerk also has a copy. I believe that's why they ask for three.
All right, so we gotta go through and sign them.
Now, question, is it possible to get it electronically?
We have a Sharpie.
I've got it electronically now. Uh, what I have to do though is, I, I, I wasn't certain that this was gonna pass muster since it's, it's the third iteration of, of, of this particular lot that's, that's being transferred. Uh, so I have to have a Mylar made and I've got the, the blank for it over there, uh, to put it on a, it's like a plastic plan.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And that is what has to get signed. So, you can sign your copies and you're all set with your copies.
Okay.
But, um, I, I, I'll be getting a, I wasn't able to get it printed up today. I just didn't have enough time. Uh, print it up and the, the date, which will be tonight, and, and your signatures, or three signatures, I believe. There's, what, five members in the board?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so three would be the majority, would have to sign that.
Well, all four of us will sign them.
Oh, you can, you can, yeah.
I just, I'd like to ask electronically because we're trying to work towards that.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
We, we don't wanna throw a lot of flat printer.
That's not a problem because that's how I have to get it to the printer anyways electronically, yeah.
Right.
This Mylar goes to the registry of deeds, right?
Yes, it does. Yes, it does. And they, they stamp, they're supposed to stamp their plan book and plan number here.
Right.
But they don't. They, I don't know if you've seen many plans, but they'll stamp it wherever they want.
Oh.
They're probably getting better. I don't know.
They're the registry. They can do that.
Yes, unfortunately.
We need a, we need a Sharpie pen and we'll run down the list there for you.
I got a Sharpie.
You wanna, why don't we turn it around and then you can stand and sign it, yeah.
Tom, Tom, would you like to use my pen?
Well, that's okay, Bill. I guess I'm not man enough.
Yeah, I, I was gonna say something wise too, but I, I couldn't come up with anything that quick.
Representable for TV.
All right, the date?
Today is January ninth.
Okay.
January ninth.
And we gotta start with the left-handed person.
I don't know if you wanna sit there. When this goes on, yes, I don't know if you wanna sit there.
Are you ready?
That was true.
I like, no, I like your haircut.
Thank you.
Actually, we'll, now, ladies first.
All right.
Close up.
We'll let him sign all three. I'll, I'll be happy to sign it next, but.
Where did the Mylar go?
He doesn't have the Mylar, remember. He's gonna bring the Mylar. But we'll date it the same. You don't wanna date the Mylar the same.
Yes, but of course you'll know because you'll have these.
Right.
So, you're saying you're gonna get it to us?
Yes, I will.
And then we'll, we'll sign it?
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're not.
So, you're gonna give it to Christina?
Oh, sure.
Uh, I'm gonna bring it to the office across the screen.
This is our, our official-
I hadn't seen it. I've been here a couple times. I met a couple of the other ladies and you weren't there.
I'm initially there from nine to two on, uh, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
Remember that.
I always look on the website.
I'm sorry, when I was looking over from there, I thought this was a Mylar.
It's a nice clean copy, but it's, you, you done or, no, no, okay.
Number two.
I'm always nervous about my, my Sharpie because if you leave it uncapped, it's gonna cry out.
Real quick?
Reasonably quick, yes. In the good old days, we did people sign them with a ballpoint pen and-
You mentioned the three iterations of this plan. I, I don't understand why we had to do that.
I, I, I didn't come here to argue my point. I just wanted to make sure that there wasn't something else that, that I, I might have missed or that you'd like to see on the plan.
All the years I've been on this only Board of Appeals, many years, or Board of Assessors, and I've been involved in town, residential and, uh, land watch and all, I've always heard your name, but I've never met you before.
Well, how long, how long have you been at it?
Don't trip there.
Thirty-five years.
Okay, it was only, would've been me then.
Yeah.
But before that was my father.
Oh, okay.
And my father started in the, uh, well, pretty much soon as he got out of the war.
Good for him.
Is your son involved?
He is now, yes.
Is it dead?
No, his name is Brian also.
The Lanson there?
That was a classic mistake. I, I, I named it Brian Alexander because my grandfather was Alexander and I'm Brian Michael. Of course, Michael, my, my father's name was Michael. I said, well, there won't be any confusion.
That's right.
No, there's still confusion, no. And, and worse than that is I had a friend who had a couple of boys, the same, about the same age as my son. And so, of course, they called him Little Brian.
Oh, he loves it.
And of course, my son didn't enjoy that.
Yeah.
So, you gotta be careful with picking names.
You never know till they get older. What's gonna happen.
Where's your office or your, we're out of your house or?
Nope. Well, I got a bunch of stuff in my house, but, uh, right downtown garden.
Gardener, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Village in the island. That's all you gotta know.
Okay.
You, you know what I mean?
I do, yeah.
Used to be a bank or is it still a bank?
Yep, no, oh, no. It hasn't been a bank and then it was a, it was the unemployment office.
For a while, yeah.
And now I think somebody's been moving in. Looks like furniture's, not furniture, a clothing store.
So, you're up on the second floor?
We're up on the second floor. Originally, we were on the third, then we're on the second floor. And we probably had half a dozen offices in that building.
I remember when-
Bring the Mylar for us to sign at the next meeting?
Absolutely, absolutely, yes.
I remember when J.C. Penney used to be across the street.
Yeah, and it just, and it, 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 it had a couple of different changes. The Drummond Bureau, who were there, was there for a while. But now, it's, I, and I, I know the gentleman because I, I was in the Rotary Club with him. And the gentleman's named Christian Arbello.
Mm-hmm.
And it's, it's Hope. It's House of Peace and Education.
Oh, good.
And he, he's one of the wonderful people-
Good.
Who was worrying about other people.
Good.
And, and they have, uh, programs for after school, for, for children that maybe don't get enough meals.
Right.
They don't have enough attention, things like that. And, uh, they're also, uh, I, I've reading it, reading the whole article about him last night, that, uh, they're, they're helping educate adults who maybe need a little help in, in, in getting educated to some of the things that you don't learn in high school-
Right.
That are important.
Oh, good.
Civic things that it's-
They have a tremendous summer camp program and they provide clothing-
I, I don't know that, but yeah.
Clothing to, uh, uh, people who go out for job applications.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, oh, so you're familiar with Hope.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that's where they are.
It's a good organization.
And they have an upstairs and downstairs. I remember shopping there when I was a kid.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah.
Okay, so I have a suggestion. If you drop by that, uh, Mylar as soon as you can.
Yeah.
We come in and out of the office occasionally.
Yeah, that's what I'm gonna do.
And we'll sign it off and then we'll, Christine can call you and say it's ready and off it goes.
Not a problem.
We don't have to wait till the next meeting.
What, you got a robot's cube in there?
Those are our, our gratitude gifts.
That's a thank, thank you of tree planting, Tom Hobson, for being a volunteer.
Yeah.
For the planning board.
There, there, there seeds in there or something?
Yeah, a little pot.
Yeah, all the volunteers in town got, we were noticed and thanked.
We, we plant trees knowing that we won't enjoy its shade. That's what the, that's what the planning board does.
Speak for yourself.
Well, they grow pretty quick though. Some, some, some do.
Some do.
Well, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much. And thank you, Christine, for coordinating all.
Oh, but I did get on TV. I was sitting here.
Oh, no, you were on TV.
I was kinda like kicking my leg off. I says, jeez, I was, and I, and I couldn't see.
But you're standing right here. You're on there.
You know any magic tricks or anything? You, now's your chance.
If you really wanna see yourself, you can go on the cable and watch tonight, or no, go on the YouTube and what.
Okay, let's get back to it.
I don't know how to do YouTube, but I'll, I'll, I'll type it into my computer and then it, it'll be different, different sites and one of them will be Tom Hobson.
Tom Hobson Planning Board, Neil, come out.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, we've got, uh, meeting minutes November seventh, as I recall.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. As I recall, we were, uh, we put up approving them, we don't have a chance to.
And I read them.
Read it? And, uh, November seventh. See them on here.
I read them on my, on my email.
They're not in there because, uh, it's fourteen pages long.
That's right.
And so, I didn't print them out last time. I didn't print them out this time, but I have an extra copy if anyone needed them.
Well, I, I don't really need them. I read them shortly after I, uh, said I hadn't read them last time we met, two times ago, and I'm prepared to approve them.
I'll make a motion with no more discussion.
Any, any comments? Uh, uh, let's make a motion. Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
As presented.
Any discussion or any editorial comments or anything on them?
Not tonight, though.
Okay.
I did read them and I didn't see anything.
All in favor?
We can get a second.
Uh, yes.
Oh, you did? She seconded.
I'll second it.
I'm sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Moving right along to correspondence.
Uh, your correspondence is in your packet.
Okay.
Um, and I can take you through that. Um, I did send out the, so, what I have for correspondence here is, um, this came in today, just letting everyone know that Ryan requested to be on February's agenda to discuss the planning board budget, so he could come by and discuss it with the planning board. I know you guys voted on the budget, but Ryan figured he would come by and discuss the planning board. Um, this is the, uh, email I sent to Brett Chapman with regards to the ninety-five Williamsville Road rock removal. So, I brought that in. It's actually sent out today, or I probably would've copied all of you on it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, just wanted to make you aware that that email had been sent. I have not yet received a response. Well, obviously, it went out today. This one also went out today. Um, this is the ninety-one Williamsville Road, um, to Mr. Segal, just, um, asking for the monies that had been discussed. Um, this is the email I sent to all of your email, uh, regarding the next two pieces of correspondence. One is the Affordable Housing Committee request, uh, for appointment. I did discuss that with, uh, Ryan today One is the Affordable Housing Committee request for appointment, I did discuss that with Ryan today and he said that they got it. It wasn't on the list of appointments for that Board of Select meeting because um, it's gonna be on the next one. And I just found that out before I left for the day.
Maybe I ought to explain what I did, um, I, I looked at the agenda for the selectmen from last Monday, two days ago. And noticed there were a bunch of appointments, but Alice's appointment wasn't one of them, so I hand carried a message to them. Resurrecting the June eighteenth table of appointments that we made, uh, that they made then. That appointed the entire planning board at the time to the Affordable Housing Committee. But of course, Tom Bradko was on that list and he's resigned and Alice has to take his place. So, um, next time they meet, Alice will be designated as that. And I mentioned that Francois was interested in being recognized as a citizen participant. So your name went before them as well.
It's on the email, thank you.
I'm talking about my hand delivered note, not the email. I went there Monday night.
Close with both.
And then this is just the right of refusal, I said the one that got sent.
The um, right of refusal was approved by the um, select board Monday night. And results in uh, sixty-seven to a hundred thousand dollars per year over a twenty-year period escalatable.
Right.
Over how long?
Escalatable, twenty-year, that's the pilot, I, I shouldn't say, the pilot is distinct from this issue. This issue was the um, chapter sixty-one, uh, take it out and pay the back taxes.
Taking the land out. Right.
I don't know the number on that, but then later in the meeting, they did indeed approve the uh. Pilot, payment in lieu of taxes.
Right.
Um, next one?
The next one is uh, Bill Murray, he's gonna let, go by sometime next week, uh, to do a drive-by of the area and give us a quote on the proposal. With regards to the rock restoration.
Next one?
And the last one is the zoning question with regards to the photography studio.
All right, um, do you have a question?
I have a question about their quick comment and uh, this is in regards to an email that I sent to Bill with some photographs. I know that there was some question last time around regarding the condition of the wall beforehand and as to whether or not this was the condition of the wall. Uh, I don't know if that had been resolved, but I was suggesting, and I'm just bringing it to you.
Yeah, I sent it out, I didn't send it out to anybody, he said, it was a pretty good picture.
So, I, I, the only, the only reliable source of public information that you have at this point in time is Google Street View.
Was it a picture, Ron? That's what we resurrected.
I'm sorry?
That's what Christina resurrected.
So, so you use pretty much the same thing?
Yes.
I do remember however, that during the conversation that you had with the gentleman who was here, it indicated that he did not recognize it as such. What I'm just saying is, is that as of two thousand and eleven, which is the last viable photograph that is on Street View. The, the, the depiction of the wall is quite clear, and that's two thousand and eleven, which is quite old. So I think for all intents and purposes, you have very good information that you can base yourself on the condition of the wall.
Christina had, had done that.
And if that's the same one, then it's, it's, it's duplicated.
Thank you for looking, thank you for looking as well, I appreciate it.
Could I ask you what gentleman was here that said he didn't recognize something?
During the conversation that took place last time the meeting took place here, uh, I believe there was somebody, I forgot the name.
Oh, that was the gentleman that lives across the street. That wasn't the person.
I, I don't know if it was the gentleman living across the street or another abutter or where he lived, I don't know. But he said that he would, he did not recognize it and he did not quite understand if this was inaccurate depiction.
Okay.
But pictures, pictures are fairly accurate, but you see them like that.
Worth a thousand woods.
Can I make a comment as well on this issue, which is um, the, I didn't have a copy of the actual statute about sidewalls, this old statute.
Mm-hmm.
And um, I sent it to Christina, but I didn't make the package, but it's very short, so if I could read it. It says, this is again, part of the crimes punishment proceedings in criminal law cases titled on crimes and punishments, crimes against property. Section one oh five, stone wall or fences unauthorized removal, so that's how you would find it if you were to look it up in the Mass General Laws.
But, correct me if I'm wrong, this isn't the scenic road.
No, this isn't, this is the, the question came up.
Yeah.
We've got the scenic road, it's a front inch wall, but there was also a sidewall, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, and I pointed out.
Perhaps two sidewalls, we don't know.
Right, and I point out this is a really old statute, it's a subject of a lot of debate, it's, people wanna revise it.
That's right.
But the way is, I think this is the correct most present, unless there's some bill that instantly, you know, is passed very recently that I don't have. And it says whoever willfully and with outright pulls down or removes any portion of a stone wall or fence. Which is erected or maintained for the purpose of enclosing land, shall be punished by a fine of not more than ten dollars.
But isn't.
But it's a crime, and then it says, natural resource officers and deputy national resources officers of the Office of the Secretary of the Executive Office of Environmental Affairs. May arrest without a warrant any person found violating this section.
Wow.
So, I'm not opining on it, I'm just telling you that's.
So you're offering that as like an upgrade, uh, or a more latest, a more recent version of that law you found?
No, this is the actual wall, it's a clarification, I had attached it and then she couldn't open it.
Yeah.
So, so this is the actual.
So it's a restable?
Does that have a page, chapter or something on it?
Yeah, it's in the top, I'll put it in here and you can, you, you could look up Mass General Laws and it will go right to it, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
No, that's ten dollars per rock. Oh, is that what's saved?
No, it's a very old, you can see by the.
What that also says is that the planning board doesn't have direct uh, control over it by default. If the environmental officer does, then we don't. Our position last time was that even though we don't have direct control over it, um, we were going to ask him to address it. And if he addresses it well and presents the plan that has been requested, we might be wise to run that plan past the D. DER office and say, this is what we're doing, uh, you know, you don't have to really get involved if you don't want to, but if you don't like what this plan says. Then you have to come in and enforce it yourself, uh, so we ought to touch base with them.
That's not a bad idea.
Thank you, Bill.
And I apologize for not having that copy last week.
Oh, I'm hearing music.
Yeah.
I am too. Somebody's phone going, is that your phone? It could very well be, but I thought I shut it off, it isn't mine, I apologize. Oh, that's okay.
A little Irish music, you know, they're.
Yeah. He had the jig going. Yeah, see, that's mine. Yeah, that should take care of that.
Yeah, the last bit of correspondence was from a local business that um, got in touch with us regarding uh, their business out on um. Sixty-eight uh, near Rieda, they were asking um, oh, as you can read, they were asking about um. Whether or not the planning board can help them the fact that they're outside of the commercial zoning district.
I did drive by this. Where did they operate out of prior to the last?
They uh, if my memory serves me correctly, they operated out of the small building that is opposite the gas station.
The old credit union.
Yeah, it used to be Estacoma Credit Union before you moved here, but uh.
You know Mr. Mike's one stock store is with the gas pumps there?
Yeah.
Right across the street.
Right across the street, the little building.
Little, little building.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, I know the building.
Fifteen by fifteen or something. They were there and that's appropriate that they be there, because that's zone commercial, or it's zone, it's zone something that allows a business to be there. Um, where they are now is not commercial, and I spoke to the gentleman on the phone. Uh, his last sentence says something like, uh, they suggested we reach out to the planning board to see if we could get the property rezoned. Or if we could get some kind of approval to use the property. He hasn't put in a formal application for anything yet, I'm gonna speak to him on the phone again. If we were to read the zoning bylaws, um, you can't rezone a parcel, you have to rezone a zone.
Mm-hmm, now, wasn't Rieda commercial?
No, Rieda is grandfathered, they were there before the planning board, before the zoning laws.
Yeah, they've been forever.
Yeah, they've been there, it's a Sunday operation, one shift, not as intrusive as it looks, because it's physically big.
Right, but then we have all the gravel pits right there too.
Well, uh, they've, I don't believe any gravel pits are operational, they've all lost their grandfathering because they haven't moved in two years. And I believe they're, I better not say this officially, but my personal belief is that uh, all their permits are expired. But this is residential agricultural land.
What was there before?
A house.
They're in a, it is a house with like an attached office, I mean, attached flat building, people buy it? It's, but it doesn't look new, it looks like somebody must, maybe another business was in there prior.
That's what they informed me.
They informed you of what?
That, that before then it was another business.
Well, it doesn't really matter, it's um, it's, it can't be, answer is questioned directly and I answered it on the phone, is you can't rezone a parcel.
Right.
And um, the other issues were um. He's been at that address for two years and uh, prior to that, he was at a, a proper address. But this is an improper address, and he told me that the real estate agent represented it as commercial, but now he knows that it's not commercial. And that's why he's taking these steps to talk to us. I also told him that uh, oh, he admitted that he doesn't live at that location. Uh, and then he, I, I, I disavow him of the concept of educational purposes, because that's really for schools. And not for uh, just giving a lesson once in a while on how something works or.
So we say we're not, we're gonna not allow people to teach other than in a school in Hubbardson?
No, it's meaning it doesn't have that exception.
If you read, you read the bylaws, it says, uh, you can put things in a residential district, and some of those things are a school. And um, or educational facility, which means a school, it doesn't mean a business that, say you ran an asphalt plant. Which tried to go in there once, by the way, an asphalt plant, and then every Tuesday morning you gave a class on what's asphalt. That's not an educational facility, that's, that's an asphalt plant.
But question, is there, have we really exhausted the um, the fact that they might be able to continue as a pre-existing use as a successor business, if it was a business?
Not as successful use, well, it doesn't matter, there's no such thing as a.
I mean, a grandfathered, you, somebody could continue to run, if it had been used as a similar business, somebody else could take over the business and run it from then.
Yes, you have two years to maintain the grandfatherability. That was done by the old Ray LaJoy garage.
Mm-hmm.
And it was failed to be done by the little store that is now the hub of the hub. That, that store went out of use as a store and a person bought it. And uh, if I understand the history correctly, uh, they were denied the permit because it wasn't a store. And then he worked to rezone a section of town, so he actually did it correctly, he got the rezoning accomplished. And then he was able to establish his store, and then of course, a new person came in later.
But we know that this, this space they're occupying for their photography student, studio, wasn't within the last two years before I guess they started running it. Being run for a kind of comparable business, similar business.
I thought it was a residence, but I may be wrong, but now he.
I just think in terms of suggesting.
My, my question on the whole thing.
It's worth considering if he qualifies, it's a pretty narrow exception.
Maybe we shouldn't be dealing at in such depth until he comes in.
He'll be coming in in February, for the February meeting.
Okay.
He, he will have to present his own case, but if you read the bylaws, and I hope you all do. Uh, section four, all the way to the end, and you.
Yeah, I did read it this, today.
You have to read uh, four one, four two, four three, four four, et cetera, up to four eight at least. Because um, we, we carefully establish what is, is a permitted use. And then we establish what is a prohibited use. And prohibited uses are all those things that are not listed in the permitted use. So it's, it's a fairly closed door situation.
But there is a section for pre-existing uses.
And um. He, he could, he could do it if he lived there, there's a use for, there's accessory uses. But um, he doesn't live there, it's dark every day, like every, I've never driven by it and seen a light on at night, so. He's, he, he doesn't own it, he was thinking of buying it. So he doesn't have any um, real vested interest in it as a, as a property. And so we've, we've, I think our actions will prevent him from making a mistake. And I think that's part of our job, to help people, help businesses establish properly and, and uh, not get wrapped up in a deal where. It seems to me the um, real estate agent has misrepresented the land as commercial when it's residential agriculture. And uh, you really can't stop them from doing that, but I don't know, have a mechanism to stop the real estate agent from doing that. But this man was smart enough to come to us and, and uh, ask the questions and we, I think we can provide him good answers. That will keep him from stepping in a hole.
And also he has a history of being in town, so maybe he can.
Yeah, we.
We'll stay in town, hate to.
On a commercial.
I don't wanna push a business out of town, we don't have any.
Oh, no, we won't do that, but we'll, we'll um, he has to recognize that in order for it to be in a residential agricultural. He has, has to have it as, as an accessory business to a residence, he has to live there, so.
Or he could take over an existing business, and it would.
The plan.
But that's, I, that's why I was just questioning, what was there before?
I, I think it was a residence.
If it had no business before, then.
It's been residential agriculture, so it wasn't a business, um, at least to my knowledge.
But it had previously been zoned this area differently, correct?
What?
Has it always been residential agriculture, or was it?
To the best of my knowledge, it has.
Oh, okay.
Originally, wasn't all of sixty-eight commercial?
I researched that and you ha, you found the language.
It was um, nineteen ninety, until nineteen ninety-one, there was um, a concept that it might have been light industrial or commercial.
Mm-hmm.
No, but it only went up to Pritchardville Road, it didn't go all the way to the Gardner lawn, we found that language.
Right, I don't remember what, what the, the road.
Went to the Pritchardville Road and this is beyond.
Oh, so this was never, this was all, okay, for years and years, okay, I got it.
And there's like, uh, some other history too, there, I mentioned an asphalt plant before, I believe an asphalt plant. Tried to go in there and they wanted to rezone a large parcel of land and the town voted that down. And there was something else, airport or a pig farm or something, they wanted the.
Ronnie LeVek wanted to put the airport where Rieda is now, and close Rieda, and it didn't get approved, so that's why Rieda grew. It used to be just the building there, and the LeVek trailer used to come in once a year.
Well, I don't know, but, but uh, attempts to rezone it have failed in the past.
And it's been that zone for a long, long time, okay.
And he also recently, isn't there another email where he said he was going to approach us with a?
This, this submitted um, as.
What is that?
This is a special permit application, he was under the impression based on, he said, based on his communications. That he could submit a s- special permit and possibly get um, this gone through. I held it for this meeting because I looked through our special permits and it didn't say anything about trying to get a zone or a very, you know, any kind of um.
Yeah, it's an inappropriate approach.
So, and I, I didn't wanna, you know, move on, cash the check, that sort of thing, and, and so I wanted to bring it to the planning board and, and get their input on what we're supposed to do with. A special permit for something that perhaps a special permit doesn't cover.
Yeah, it, it's a, this, this situation doesn't um. Is not resolvable through the, through the uh.
Special permit path.
I think we should send him a letter stating that.
Yeah, I was gonna call him up.
Have them come in in February, they're playing that company anyway.
I was gonna call him up and try to explain the situation, I spoke to him once before and he, he was very um, very nice man. Very polite and everything, it was a fine conversation, but I perhaps failed to um, make a couple of key points. And I would like to call him back and make those key points and, and uh, he'll have to make some decisions. And I hope, you know, I hope we can steer him in the right direction, he doesn't wanna buy that property.
And I hope he'll stay in town.
Oh, I, I think he'll stay in town, he was in town for seven years, so he's not about to pull up stakes, but we'll have to find a good home for him.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna call him up, unless anyone objects, I'm gonna call him up and have a conversation with him, and I'm gonna take him through the, through the bylaws. And by the way, that's the way that's been enforced in the past, I refer to a couple of other examples, but that is a consistent um, interpretation of how we, how we apply the law. Get us through correspondence.
Yeah, the other correspondence, just the ones I sent you, like the ZVA um, from uh, Towns and then, believe it or not, uh, Tom's email from the eleventh of December with the photo.
Oh, yeah.
This, we haven't had correspondence on the agenda since then, so I've been holding them until it came back on the agenda.
I should just tell you what I did there, um.
This has all been sent all off to you, um, this is in an email, these two documents.
Yeah, about two.
What does it say it is, oh, you are, I'm sorry, I didn't make out copies of that, because as I said, it's, that's about a month old, I.
In time.
Oh, oh, yeah, okay, okay, okay.
About two years ago, the planning board tried to initiate a municipally owned solar farm of some type. And we, um, Bill, Bill Murray, um, our engineering person. Uh, went out and surveyed plots and buildings and anything else we might be able to plant the solar system on and provided a report. And uh, I resurrected that report for Ryan, who wasn't aware of it because he wasn't here. And uh, provided him a copy of it, and then I supplemented that with copies of the buildings from a bird's eye view. I had at the occasion to be up on the library roof and looking out the little hole in the back, so I took these pictures and, and identified um, roof locations. Where you could put solar, or at least conceptually, you'd have to find out by an engineering analysis.
Yeah.
But um, a municipal solar system is, is very advantageous to a town, and we should continue to pursue that.
The town would have to put the money up front, right?
Well, uh, I'm, I'm not sure of how the financial, um, the project financing. But I know the end result is, is advantageous to the town, particularly if it consumes the electricity that the solar panels generate. And then what is in excess of that can get sold off or designated for other buildings. Like you could put the solar system up here and designate it for the highway department, you know.
Right, right.
And uh, as long as it's all within the same utility.
Mm-hmm.
And um, I think that just, I think Ryan's pursuing it, I think we ought to just back him to the hilt.
Right, they would put them on their own building, so.
It is a good thing.
Right.
That's all I have for my response.
He, he cites, he cites in his report the conservation land on the top of Mount Jeff, I think the open space and conservation land. I don't think you could repurpose to a solar use if it's reserved for conservation land, good.
I don't know, I haven't read that report in a while, but he did a good job, he.
Yeah, looks very thorough.
He dug into the possible locations. Another thing that, I'm gonna. Another thing that, I'm gonna go to the next topic if it's okay with everybody. Hubbardson spending analysis versus comparable towns. That's kind of an awkward title. Ryan refers to it as benchmarking. Where you look at how the town's revenue is generated and how the town's spending is allocated. And you compare it to towns that you think, uh, may be similar. And we owe a lot of credit to, um, Mr. Lerner, I believe his name is. He's on the finance committee. He, uh, cracked open the data that's available from the Department of Revenue and did an analysis of his own, which was very good. Presented it back in June to the finance committee and I think in August to the whole town in a select board committee. And he had it up on the screen and did a good job. It wasn't quite aimed at benchmarking. It was, it was trying to just open the idea of this discussion about where is Hubbardson ranked with respect to other towns. And, uh, he analyzed the whole state, which was, uh,
Okay.
a formidable task and he did a great job. But, um, Ryan now is saying, let's find towns that are, uh, close to Hubbardson. And there's a lot of ways of looking at it, but how many square miles or, you know, what do you really use to establish towns that are close to Hubbardson? So I took a stab at it. I went to the same, uh, Department of Revenue, uh, Department of Local Affairs or something that provides this database. It's a giant spreadsheet. And I sliced and diced and sorted and came up with a concept that in, in five or six slides I'd like to present to you. And that's why we have the fancy setup tonight.
Oh.
Um, I need to get at least the mouse.
You can sit here, I'll move.
Now, how does this work?
Give me a second. It's going to-
It's not one of those platforms, platform?
It's going to mirror?
I guess not.
It's gonna mirror what you have on here?
I just wanna project what I have on the screen.
Right.
This won't take long, it's, introduction's probably longer than that. There it is.
Should we kill the lights?
I don't think so.
It's actually pretty bright once it warms up.
Where would this go?
Um, well, the problem is, is we're almost out of, um, USB ports. We have three in use right now, but we can take this one out. You can put yours in there.
What's that?
This is for the, uh, mouse that was not in the bag, so somebody else must have it. It's right, and now we're projecting.
Always lights are on one switch, right? You can't just kill one.
I might be able to, would you like me to try?
I can see it okay, if it's okay with you folks.
Can you, can you see? Uh, what? I need to not be in your line of vision.
That's okay.
Is that good?
That's perfect, thank you. My mouse, let me bring my mouse pad.
I have one in my pocket.
Let's see if this will work. There it is.
Yeah.
Is there a way to project that higher?
There's usually a screw-down stand in the middle on the bottom. There you go. Yep, you got the button, just.
What's that? So, uh. Benchmarking. Anybody wanna change your seat so you don't get stiff necks? Please feel free to get up and move around. There's some basic assumptions. That we have a vision of the town, that it's been formulated for the, for the horizon, you know, the five, ten-year kind of view of where we wanna be and maybe beyond that. The other, uh, and, and by the way, that vision I don't think has completely come into focus. We, we don't really have a vision yet, but this is all part of the deal. The other basic assumption is that, that because we're looking at municipal spending and revenue, that spending and revenue can shape the town toward that vision. You spend money, you get a result. It isn't always true, but that's the assumption, 'cause that's all we're really looking at, money. Um, and then, of course, there's always externalities. Non-municipal drivers can shape the town toward or away from the vision. A big development comes in or a highway cuts through town or something that happens that we really didn't foresee or don't have any real direct control of. So the objective of this analysis is to, uh, present a tool where we can use this analysis to establish comparisons between Hubbardson and other towns for the purpose of reprioritizing and aligning municipal spending to drive the town towards the vision. And reprioritizing is a key word. Budgeting is prioritizing. Now, how do I get to the next step? Oh.
Just hit, just click.
We're gonna select municipalities that look and seem like they're comparable to Hubbardson. We're again, identify the whole municipality, like, we wanna be like Town X. Or features from Town X, that we wanna, we wanna, uh, replicate or, or make ours like theirs. And propose increasing or decreasing spending. Because budgeting is prioritizing where you're gonna spend. So how do you select the towns? We, I, I chose some basic factors. Geography, size, land area, how much, how many roads we have. People factors, um, population considerations, how many residents do we have? And Hubbardson's population's roughly forty-five hundred right now, it might be forty-five seventy-five or something, but I'm using easy, easy numbers. So when I looked at all the towns in the state, the first thing I did was went to Worcester County only. That might be a mistake, but it's the assumption. Uh, and I went down from our forty-five hundred to two-thirds of forty-five hundred, which, nice easy math, works out to three thousand. And I went up to four-thirds of forty-five hundred, which is six thousand people. So I looked at towns in Worcester County between three thousand and six thousand. Then I also have, uh, we also found in the DOR data, uh, you can calculate population density and people per square mile. So it's geography, people, and money. Now, money, I, we see, in, in the DOR data, we see the, uh, single-family tax bill and, and industrial assessed value. Is the town, uh, a bedroom community or is it a industrial, uh, community? So here's, here's a slice. This is the population. And so you'll see towns between three thousand and six thousand two hundred. So I, I chose it and we got sixteen records here. I deliberately hid the names of all the other towns. 'Cause I don't want you sitting here saying, oh, I wanna be like, name the town, you know? Uh, I wanna focus on the criteria. And these criteria are just my criteria. The beauty of this database is if you don't like my criteria, use some other criteria.
Right.
Um, single-family tax bill, here's us, here are the other guys. Per capita income, uh, I'm not quite sure what this is. It's some kind of an equivalency, uh, per capita. It must be in some way adjusted, but I'm not sure. Land area, population density, I think I calculated that. And then, uh, roads and the sum of all the residential evaluation. And by the way, this table goes on for about a hundred columns. So this is just a cut of what I, what I put up there as criteria. Remember land area and roads and, and so-
Tom, what's the last column?
Residential evaluation.
It's all the residential property in town?
Yes, I, I think it's that.
Okay, very.
The DOR data was a little short on descriptions. But Mr. Lerner, I think, uh, can help us with it and, and other people in town may know more, but this is the first cut, okay? So down here, I took, uh, here's the rank of Hubbardson. Let's take this thing. I say Hubbardson's tenth of sixteen from the highest. So there are sixteen towns considered and there's nine of them that have more population than us. And what would it be? Five of them have less population than us. And I went across and said, how, eleventh out of sixteen, we're ninth out of sixteen, we're tenth out of sixteen, we're second out of sixteen in land area. We're fourth out of sixteen in road miles. So sometimes we're on the high side of things, sometimes we're on the low side of things. So I said, I gotta get rid of some of these outliers. Let's look at population, and I'm not gonna get rid of anybody for that because I already made the cut. But let's look at these single-family tax bills. Here's a town with a ten thousand, here's a town with a ten thousand. I thought that was a little rich for a-
You think?
Land area, believe it or not, here's a town that's only five point two square miles when we're forty. Here's one, four point nine square miles when we're forty. So this is like an eighth of Hubbardson. So I said, too low, yellow them out. And what I'm ultimately gonna do is everywhere there's a yellow, I'm gonna come over here and get rid of the town. And get down from sixteen to twelve. So here's a industrial evaluation, here's us. That town has private industry in it, we don't. So that, that was the methodology. And the next slide is gonna show the yellow ones eliminated. We're gonna go from sixteen to twelve. We're honing in on things that are closer and closer to Hubbardson. So now I fill in the towns. And Hubbardson is this, and where does Hubbardson rank from the highest? A lot, if you're in position six or seven in a list of twelve, you're right in the middle. If you're two, then you're way up on the high end. If you're nine, you're closer to the low end. So this ranking thing is, lets us know where we are. And it looks like it's pretty representative, a lot of sixes and sevens. And here are the towns, Ashburn, Barry, Boston, Booker, Howard. And here is a, perhaps a better representation of the towns.
Mendon's way out there.
Well, it's geographically out there.
Right.
But if I even went back a slide, Mendon is-
Close to us.
Six thousand, six thousand, fifty thousand, little higher income. Significantly higher income, it's closer to Boston.
Right.
Little smaller in the land.
Almost twice the reservation.
Higher population density. You know, we could throw Mendon out, I, but I'm trying to describe a process.
I was just saying, well- But I'm just saying with the whole group, that's the only one that's not really right here.
Yeah, I'm, I'm trying to describe a process, I'm not trying to get the answer yet.
Right, right.
We can, we can fool around with this in any number of ways. So there are the towns. Some of these towns in the south are on the, closer to the Mass Pike Route nine, Route twenty kind of thing.
Right.
And up here, we're on the Route two.
Corridor.
Corridor, or whatever you wanna call it. And there's a north-south road, you know, uh, one ninety.
Mm-hmm.
But these are the, these are the, uh, towns that fell out of the analysis. Princeton, Barry, Hardwick, you know, the, some of them we know pretty well, Ashburn hand. Others we know less well, Warren. I think this is Warren down here. Brookfield.
That's where Molly Bush was from.
Who?
The girl that got kidnapped and killed.
Heidi.
Oh, my goodness.
That was on the nose.
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't recognize the name right away.
Oh, oh.
I didn't hear you well.
Oh, it's okay.
That's very unfortunate. So what have we done? We've, uh, compared the towns and now we've picked them out, identified, identified the towns. And now we look at the towns from a, uh, um, spending point of view. Not from, not from the characteristics so much as how they spend their money.
Right.
With respect to driving the town towards the vision. We can make no change, we can stay where we are, we could achieve average. Uh, we had, we could move to average or we could move to an exceptional amount, either high or low. We don't wanna spend any money on that or we wanna spend a lot more money on that and move ourselves right up to the, say, the top of the list of some kind of spending category. There's always cautions. This is just talking about money. And, uh, a, a lot of things don't always respond to money. And we, if we think some town has some features we really like, we gotta go look. And, uh, not just come away with the impression, but, you know, physically go look and talk to the people that generated it, who knows? We looked at senior cen- as an example, we looked at senior centers. And we went over to Irving and fell in love with Irving Senior Center. Irving gets seventy percent of its revenue from the pump storage station. The, uh, electrical generating, uh, pump storage station. We got a lot of money. And, uh, it was, it's money from a, a project, not from every individual taxpayer. And you kinda lose sight of things sometimes, you know? How'd they get this very nice senior center? Well-
Good income.
One answer. So now I'm gonna flip over to another file. Real quick, I'm trying to go through this as fast as I can. I wanna go to the spreadsheet. Um, I don't quite understand what I'm doing yet, just a minute.
Do you need some tax categories?
Nah, but. Here we go, see how big this spreadsheet is? All right?
I'm gonna have a hard time reading that, Tom.
Yep, you are. So that's why I've made it like this, watch this, I can, I can, uh, scroll through this. You've seen population and income and all that stuff, land area, those are the characteristics. But if we wanna get to spending, I'm gonna zip through here, here's one, here's an interesting one. State aid. We're, we're, uh, low on that. We're number ten out of twelve. See us there? The, uh, ranking would be low. We should probably figure out ways to get more state aid or grants or something. Let's go to, I'm looking for like police and this kinda stuff. Interesting spreadsheet, huh?
Goes on forever.
So here are spendings. Let's look at, uh, general government. We're six oh six, the average number is seven seventy-one. We would have to spend a hundred and sixty-five thousand more dollars to get to the average. This is a very crude, you know? The rank doesn't always tell you everything, you have to sooner or later turn it into money. Police, again, we're, we're below average. Fire, we're below average. Public safety, we're below average. Not, you know, not by big numbers. But we are nevertheless, education, we're below average. Public works, below average. So we, we run, uh, the, of course, the complimentary comment would be that we run a pretty tight ship. We, uh, um, keep costs under control. And, uh, intergovernment, I think that's the extent to which we, we pay other towns for things like regionalization, I think. I have to get into the descriptions of these things. Debt? We are very low on debt.
We're in the middle.
Well, yeah, but it's a small number.
Right.
We would have to double our number to get to the average. See, that's six fifty-four.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
We'd have to go from three thirty to six sixty, uh, to get to the average. But that means maybe we could borrow and, and do something with borrowed money- But that means maybe we could borrow and and do something with borrowed money and, you know, and, uh. The, the, that's never been popular in this town, but, um, if you compare yourself to other, other towns, you might, um, have a different view of ourselves. And that is the end of my little discussion, bond ratings, that's the end of the spreadsheet. But I, I wanted to present a methodology to select towns to benchmark against. And a quantitative tool to adjust spending by spending category to move the town in the direction that the town chooses to move in. We could throw all my work out and start over again, I wouldn't have any problem with that, as, this is just an example.
Right.
I think it's a tool that we can use. And that's the end of it. Comments or questions or criticisms or?
Informative.
You submit questions?
No.
I mean, thanks for, uh, presenting this year and I appreciate this year. What's your vision in terms of utilizing this information vis a vis the planning board?
Well, there's several. First, I think, um, the planning board, I, I'm going to, uh, offer the tool, not necessarily the answer. But the tool to Ryan because he said he's, uh, he's embarking on a benchmarking program. And he, I believe he's asked other boards to do the same thing, benchmark Hubbard's then against other towns. And, um, maybe, uh, Mister Lerner or other, other people have other means by which to do it. We put our heads together and we come up with a way that, um, as he says, benchmarks or compares our town to other towns. So that's the first thing, get it over to Ryan and see what he thinks and see what he has from other boards. The second thing would be, um, to recognize that we don't have a good vision. And you can't use any tool unless you know how big the hole you're supposed to dig with it is, you know? So, so, uh, we really need to work on the vision. And then only after that, remember budgeting is prioritizing. So he's working towards, how does the town want a budget? And we have to express our priorities. And, uh, that will probably flow through economic development activity or planning board activity or finance committee activity. Or conservation commission activity, open space committee, all these committees will contribute to accomplishing the vision once we establish the vision. Does that make sense? Sometimes I'm talking.
Scary, scary like it does. It's clear as my tongue.
All right, I'm gonna keep the meeting rolling. If it's okay with everybody, I'm not trying to present the answer, I'm trying to present a tool. And I'm gonna go to Ryan with it. But he didn't want me to just freelance, I'm coming back to the board to get my foundation under me. If anybody wants anything different, yell at me now.
I don't want anything different, I just wanna suggest that it would see, I mean, I look at the Paxton number, which is crazy because if you look at like the debt.
Is Paxton, is Paxton in total debt?
Yeah, it is.
Oh, yeah, it is.
And you look and see it says, total debt service, Hubbard's in three hundred thousand, poor old Paxton's down at two million. And that, and part of that is because if you're part of a regional school and you build a new high school, it blows your budget to bits, right?
Oh, I see.
Um, and then they built, but they're not necessarily crazy people, I mean, uh, we.
We don't live there anymore.
You know, they were confronted with, well, the state will pay you sixty percent of the high school this year, it'll be forty percent next year. And you're on probation because your facilities, you know, and those are big loans and they have a huge impact. And then they had on top of that, because nobody had done anything for many years, about the public safety situation. They had to build a public safety building. So it is good, I think, uh, to, when you have a time where the schools are in a stable position and you're not gonna be hit with those big outside expenses. If you could do, maybe take on a little more debt and actually do the senior center, do the public safety building or, you know, especially if, uh, bond prices aren't too high. So, uh, I don't know how the rest of the board feels about that, but.
We miss the best bond prices, but here's, here's, uh, Paxton's police and public safety and fire, these are the numbers right in here where that thing's flipping back and forth.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, public safety, um, two and some, two and a half times us, uh, fire about the same. And police, if you, I, I don't know what that is, whether that's all just labor or whether that's the police station or.
Yeah, I don't know.
Probably just labor, uh.
Well, it's probably the budget, right?
Labor and equipment, yeah, it's the budget. But, um, yeah, what you're doing.
They would probably include like the police cars and stuff, which are very expensive.
Oh, yeah.
And you can't amortize them over many years, so that figure's gonna bounce around.
Right.
Yeah, I didn't mean just labor, I meant it's the operational budget, not a budget, not the facility.
Right, right, but it wouldn't include the public safety building, facility, probably.
That's been a big problem for this town, everybody wants all this stuff, but there's no way to, nobody's, you know, we've had many votes that were turned down because people didn't want such a high increase in their tax rate, um, to do all of this. I think it'd be very important because people are in favor of it, to look at a way to start off, just even when we do a small portion and build on that. Unless we, what I would like to see is get something like, um, the town you're saying that paid for their senior center, you get a town, Irving.
Oh, Irving.
What a great way to do it where it doesn't destroy your town and.
Well, we can't, we can't build the, the, uh.
An idea.
Mountain, is it?
Right, right, well, we could look at something else.
Pump storage system in it, they pump water from the Connecticut River up.
Right.
And then they let it back down through the same pumps and turn them into generators.
Right.
And they make off peak power, or I should say peak power.
Right.
And, uh, uh, what you just did, Alex, was you injected a background knowledge behind the money. And that's what we need to make good decisions. You can't just look at the number.
No.
You gotta understand why the town is what it is, the history, how they got there, what they're doing, is it planned or is it accidental, is it, you know? And, and.
Well, they're not, and you also, I mean, Paxton was terrible, it was the highest rate in the whole state.
Highest rate of what?
Uh, the highest.
Interest bond rate?
Tax rate, I think.
Oh, really?
A couple few years ago. Anyway, the towns do bounce around, but I think the big lesson to be learned is you gotta see what you're going to be in your regional agreements. What you're gonna be hit with as assessments and then don't defer everything else if you've got a time when you can take on some money and, you know, and level it out. And you won't have the citizens screaming.
Here's tax rates. Uh, residential tax rate.
What is that?
Ashburn Hand's twenty-two, twenty-three. We're about fifteen, Paxton's twenty. So it's high, it's the second highest, I guess.
Well, and it's come down, yeah.
Of our sixteen. That's, remember, it's only, I'm sorry, of our twelve, that we've culled our list down to.
Right.
I'm sure there's plenty of other towns with higher tax rate.
Oh, sure.
Wealthy.
What's price Templeton's on on this list?
Uh, Templeton has about eight thousand people.
Oh, okay.
It, eight thousand seven hundred or something.
Well, it, it's a big area, too.
Yeah, it just was, uh, bigger than us.
Right. Cause that was four towns consolidated into one.
I don't know.
Yeah, Otter River, Templeton, Baldenville, I can't think of the other two.
So the big difference between fifteen dollars and twenty dollars?
Thirty percent.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, I, you, we can.
But you wouldn't say that was like the ti- the town administrator or our management that issues so much, I mean. Except that they, they probably shouldn't have postponed their public safety building till they had to build it right on top of the, the high school, you know?
Well, it wasn't that many years ago, borrowed money cost five or six percent. And then a few short years ago, borrowed money was two percent. You know, and, and that makes a big difference on a five million dollar loan or whatever, whatever it is over.
Right. What is it today, does anybody know?
I bet it's about three and a half.
Yeah.
For municipal borrowing.
Right.
Maybe, yeah, three and a half. Municipal borrowing is, is effective, I mean, that's why they have the laws they have on the municipal bonds and whatnot. All right, we're, you can dive into these numbers and just start doing things. But, uh, again, this department of revenue, uh, database is just very interesting. And I, I compliment Mister Lerner for, as I said, cracking it open, making everybody take a look at it.
Mm-hmm.
And this was my view of it and he has a different view and somebody else has a different view.
Well, thank you, Tom.
Well, we'll see.
Very interesting.
Now, I got another one, uh, real quick. This one. The town in Northborough produced a document called design guidelines. And the table of contents is listed there, uh, index is listed there on the left. And it's a big document, but I, I think, and I, in a way I hope, that, uh, Hubbard's then will have some development. And I think it's up to us as a planning board to, um, enforce the zoning bylaws. And they say certain things, setbacks and whatnot. But they don't say other things, they don't, they don't, uh, create what might be called the design review process. The people that come before us submit the plot plans and they have a little box and they say that's the building. But you don't get to kinda see what the building is. Or, I guess to some extent you can control traffic, you can control driveways, you can control, you know, I'm, now I'm talking commercial buildings, I'm not talking houses. But we should perhaps ask the applicants to submit a little more information. Give me a elevation view of the building, I mean, they have it, the guy's gonna build it in a year if he gets his permit, so he's gotta have the plans. Just put it on the table and let us see what it looks like. And what this guideline document does is says, here's, here's a good approach to some factor that goes into a nice commercial building. And here's something that isn't as good. And it points out comparisons. So these guidelines introduce the concept of a design review process, architectural features, how it fits into the town. The project design review is by the planning board, we do, we do it already, site plan reviews, environmental community impact statements, et cetera, et cetera. But we really don't look at the buildings. Publish and inform applicants of expectations before they apply. Why should he come in and put something on the table and we say, oh, we don't like it, go back and revise it, and then we don't like it yet, go back and revise it? No, put the expectations out in front, so he comes in with a plan that, uh, is in, is in concert with what we, we expect. And, um, uh, so we may have to change our submittal requirements in our, in our bylaws.
Now, this is something we can look at and review, too, we're not gonna add this into our scope of rules or anything, just right overnight tonight, right?
No, oh, no, 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 I'm trying to, I'm trying to think about how do you achieve the vision.
Okay.
Well, you achieve it by spending money some ways, but you also achieve it by exercising some, uh, influence on the kind of commercial projects we're gonna have and what they're gonna end up looking like. So that when you drive through town, you say, oh, this is nice, I'll, I'll show you some more examples here. This has to do with building placement and orientation, setbacks, buffer areas. There's two examples here, landscaped front yard on the left, no front yard, it's all parking. Of course, that shows it with no cars there, but when there's cars there, it gets a little worse looking. And, um, so that's an example, we could steer people toward the encouraged side and away from the discouraged side. Open space, you wanna make some percentage of the lot, open space, you wanna have vegetation, either naturally existing, you know, you save a tree. Or you bring in plantings. It should be physically and visually accessible, the, the nice part, you drive by, you see it. And it also has to do with stormwater management, large paved areas are, um, uh, a, a stormwater burden. Pedestrian accommodations, we were gonna put in sidewalks, we're gonna make a walkable community, I heard Todd Miller talk about that a lot. Even integrating housing, residential housing and stores in the same kind of complex. So you make it pedestrian accommodations and traffic control and parking. It's, it's much nicer to have a driveway with a, uh, controlled entrance and exit rather than a, just a big open curb or a big open driveway. And I, I had occasion of driving by the pizza shop tonight down here on sixty-eight. And I, I looked at it with new eyes, cause I've been looking at these pictures. They did a pretty good job, they've got a big lawn in the front, they've got, they saved this row of, I think they're oak trees. They've got one driveway, everybody comes in and out the same place. The, uh, and I'll go on and compliment them on, on another factor. See this kind of a thing over here? This roof line versus this roof line? This is really interesting. And I drove by the pizza place and they, they have cables and little dormer type things, they really did.
She did a good job when she built that, yeah.
Yeah. It, it falls right into this, uh, way of thinking about, you know, why ugly, let's make it look good. So these are a bunch of, um, encourage, discourage, encourage, discourage, encourage, discourage, you know, they're guidelines. You can't possibly write rules that would take all these cases. And, you know, define how big the, uh, the dumpster enclosure has to be in some regulation somewhere. But you can say, please enclose it instead of just leaving them all loose. So this approach, uh, I'm gonna ask the board, will this approach be the best interest of Hubbard's then? If commercial development expands in Hubbard's then, we have to be ready for it? Is this a question of zoning regulations or bylaws? Do existing bylaws need revisions? We could target some minor changes for the June, uh, annual town meeting. And if we're gonna act, uh, the warrants are presently open, I think, and I don't know when they close, they usually close around, what, March first or somewhere?
I think so, yeah, March or early April.
So I'm really asking, is this in the best interest of Hubbard's then, we always wanna act in that best interest.
Do you know whether Northborough's design review was a bylaw?
I believe it was, they have, uh, very extensive zoning bylaws. This document I have copied from, the whole document has some text in it that describes their design review process and bylaw number seven and bylaw number ten and whatnot. And I can post or I can distribute this whole.
I'd like to really look at it all, too, because I know another side of me, I know other communities in the state of Massachusetts, you have to paint your house a certain color, you have to paint it every other year. And it's all part of the bylaws and I don't wanna see Hubbard's and get to that.
This is not residential bill.
And I'm just saying, even businesses wise, I.
Yeah.
You know, I, I thi- I like what you're presenting here and I think it's good to have that, that control and input when folks are doing that, but I don't wanna over control people, too.
I don't either.
That's, that's my concern.
But I also don't want a big purple building, you know?
And I agree with that.
So you have to do, you, you can't always rely on people's, um, what's the word? Common sense or something, I mean, you can't always rely on that.
Right.
If you drive around town, I think our color choices are pretty nice.
Right.
And I'll point to the pizza shop again.
Right.
And this, and this, uh.
But that, that was done without any, you know, over control from the planning boards.
That's right, now this is guidelines, this isn't, that doesn't even necessarily have to be a guide, uh, a, a bylaw.
Right.
We could just put them up on our website and say, if you're gonna come in with a commercial building, look at this. And, and this is the stuff we like and this is the stuff we don't like.
Right.
But to not say anything and let a guy spend all his harder, or person spend all his hard earned money on developing plans and then he comes in and we turn our nose up at it, that's not fair.
Right, no, I wouldn't mind putting that as a guideline, that would be great.
Yeah.
But I, I just, I don't like to get too regulated.
I agree with you, I'm not interested in.
Right.
Being the, the lawn art cop.
Right, right. Francois had a.
I, I, I think it's, I, I think it's a great thing to, to have because I think everybody has subjective opinions as to what is nice and what is not nice. But coming, uh, back with some guidelines is good, I think it's important also to have community input on this here.
Correct.
Uh, I mean, planning board does represent the community to some extent, but I'd say that before guideline even also be presented, I'm sure that this is maybe something you would be considering doing anyway. Is just to present this here as something that is being considered and get input from the community. Uh, because I think everybody who lives here, who goes to Mister Mike's or goes up to a pizza shop, understands what they want to potentially see and seeing a guideline might help them realize. understands what they want to potentially see and seeing a guideline might help them realize the benefits of something that, that, that happens here.
Right, right. That's not a bad way to do it.
The, the purpose of tonight was, of course, to talk to the board, but also, I set this, I shouldn't say I. Christina got this thing set up so that it can project to our home viewers and get the conversation started.
Oh, good.
We wouldn't do anything without having public hearings. You can't make a bylaw change without public hearings and all that kind of stuff. So that's the process. But I'm really asking, do we wanna pursue something like this for the good of the town? Or if nobody's interested, then I'm pushing on a rope, you know? The formalization of it, this is gonna be real hard to read, but up here you have a, it says, this is how the, how the design guideline is implemented. They, the applicant might come in with an informal meeting. And the design review committee, of course, is in this case, is our planning board. And they've, they've kind of roughed something out and then they have another informal meeting. Then there's a meeting with the committee and then there's a site plan and, and look at what the architect's done and other jobs and drawings of the exterior elevation, so you know what the roof looks like, instead of just a box on a drawing. So we might just get by as easily as changing our, what's called submission requirements. Add a couple things to the list. And we'd get a peek at what this building's gonna look like when it's all done. But it might be that simple, Bill. And.
Which is fine with me, I don't think it's an overburden on anybody doing that.
No, he's got them anyway, because he's gonna build a building.
Right.
Sometimes they'll come in with a three D model, they can spin them around and show you the whole thing. Landscaping plans, you know, what's next door, photographs of adjacent buildings, so you're not intrusively intruding on, on neighbors and whatnot. So, think about it, and I hope the public thinks about it, gives us some feedback. But I've been carrying this guideline around now for about three years and I keep bringing it up, so I thought I'd bring it up again.
This might be a good year because of all the work being done on Main Street. They have a lot of streetscaping done for us.
Wouldn't it be good if you could extend that somehow, you know, and, and give that the, the flavor of the town?
It'd be nice to have some consistency in lighting, I think, on Main Street and stuff. There are things that could be done.
There used to be streetlights.
Two lights, I think we had two.
There used to be streetlights all over down Main Street.
Yeah, I know.
Did you mean sign lighting?
No, I actually meant street lighting or something. Like, there's very sophisticated streetlights these days where they don't shine in windows and stuff.
Oh, yes, we, we looked at that at the Main Street Committee.
And it's like, it's very dark to drive through the middle of town at night.
I believe, they, they are, we are upgrading the lighting on Main Street, part of this project.
I don't know, I don't think.
I think so. I have to remember.
I don't remember buried wires or Holden type lights, you know?
All the wires are gonna stay the way they are, it's just, I think we talked about, and again, I'm going from memory, I could be wrong, about adding the lights back in. And there's a low energy cost.
And low, low projections, it doesn't go in upstairs windows.
Correct.
Yeah.
It's like you went to the sky, dark sky lighting.
Well, I mean, if you're, if you're ever gonna do this, this would be a nice compliment.
I believe that's what, I'm trying to remember from the plans.
We're it, you know?
Right.
Some of these things are covered in our bylaws, like you, the parking lot bylaw does not let you put a parking lot in the front yard, I believe.
I, I'd have to check that. I, I don't have all those regulations.
Right, right. I do like the aspect of asking for a little more information when they bring it in, what the building's gonna, I think that's a good thing. Because it does, it protects, it protects the people and what the town's gonna look like, I think that's really important.
I bet, I bet an organization like the Pizza Place probably bragged about it and came in with the pictures. It's the guy or the applicant who doesn't show ya is the one you gotta kinda worry about, you know?
Right.
And I have to say, they did a good job.
Yeah, they did.
All right, that's the, oh, yeah, that's the, that's the ballgame.
Did you say something about you didn't like a purple building?
Uh-oh.
What's wrong with a purple building?
I like purple.
Purple's my favorite color.
Well, I think it's perfectly appropriate for a t-shirt, I'll get you a purple t-shirt.
Not a building.
Not the whole building, not the whole barn, you know? Thanks for putting up with me. Oops, I did this wrong, but that's all right.
Do you have turnout of the fees that we're supposed to be voting on by chance?
Yeah, let's move on to the next stop.
Next thing is public hearing for the purpose of amending the fees, including the rules and regulations governing the subdivision of land in Hubbardston.
Sending me those PowerPoints in an email?
Yes, I think, is it okay if I give these to Christina and we post them?
Post them on the website?
I don't know what we do.
I gotta attach them to the minutes if you want.
That, yeah, that'd be fine.
Okay.
I will do that.
Okay, great.
Whoa, they're jumping.
Tom, I, I got a question for you.
Yes, sir.
How did, unless I missed the email, how did Ryan like the letter?
To the attorney. Oh, oh, I have to tell you that, sir. I remember you guys gave, the folks gave me the option to either send it or have it reviewed. I brought it to Ryan, he read it, and he said, he, he didn't really give an opinion because it's not his job to give an opinion, he's not a lawyer. And, so he said something like, what was his exact phrase, something like, you, you did a credible job or something, you know? And I thought about it a little bit, and so I just sent it in to the attorney. And it is as you sent it, but I, I owe you people a copy. I have to give you that, too. Christina.
Yes, we sent it to the complainant.
Yes, we sent it to the complainant and to the attorney, Attorney General. And when you send it to the Attorney General, you also send the complaint. And I sent both of those out with registered mail, hard paper copies in envelopes. So I forgot to send out the electronic side of this picture. And I will get it to Christina and we'll get it to everybody. But it is as you read it, I, I don't think I changed two words. Does that answer your question?
Yeah. I was just curious whether Ryan liked it or not.
He, he didn't express an opinion because he didn't wanna endorse the position. And that's, and that's appropriate.
I can read them from this, if this is right. Right.
Okay. What happens now, of course, is you wait thirty days for the complainant to read our version of the story and offer counter discussions or whatever they wanna offer. That, by the way, becomes a public document, I'll request that from the officers during the general, read it. And anybody can add, I think anybody can add supplemental information, they call it. You can, you know, somebody says it's blue and you know it's red and you can put the photograph of the red one in and, you know, you can, you can do it.
Is this it, Alice?
I don't expect to hear from the A.G. for sixty to ninety days.
Well, they're buried right now, so.
They are, they've lost some staff and, and.
Sorry, I thought I.
What are we doing, we got two things going on here?
I'm just asking, Alice asked if I had something.
We were supposed to take a bit, a vote on these planning fees, we posted it tonight, but.
The next one.
Right, and that's the official one you'd given, but it wasn't the one that, wasn't the spreadsheet and I didn't know which one was needed for tonight.
We're wanting to have a public hearing.
Yes, we are, but we have to have, maybe it's in the minutes of some meeting, what we finally agreed on is fees is the problem.
I believe we were gonna raise them all.
No, we agreed, we agreed to your table. Are we missing the table?
I'm looking, that's.
We are missing the table.
Missing the table.
Uh-oh.
If you'll excuse me, I could run across the street and go get it from my office, I apologize.
Sure. Would that be in an email?
I don't think it is.
No, she did say.
Be in our last meeting minutes.
Didn't we vote it in, we voted them.
We.
I have, this is the old fees, one seventy-five A and R filing, and we were going to two fifty, I'm just not sure that these are completely right.
Isn't it in the meeting minutes from the December?
Yes, but those meeting minutes aren't complete, so I don't have it with me.
Oh, I know, but if you got it, it would be.
No, but I have, I have the, the chart she gave me in a, I actually have the Excel spreadsheet, it's in my office. I just have to go in and, and get it and print it out.
All right, that's perfect.
So I apologize.
No, don't apologize, just take a couple minutes and do that.
Yeah.
I have a topic I could.
Still, Steve's going over there by himself?
Oh, I'm fine, yeah.
In the summer, in the, in the annual town meeting.
Sorry, I didn't have it, I meant to call you.
No, I, that was the thing, is I didn't know which, I thought, I didn't know if we were going off the spreadsheet or if we were going off the, so I, I.
I think you might have to go to the minutes, because I think they were amended at the minutes. So maybe we do need to put it off till next time. This is, this was our fee.
Right.
No, we could put it off to our February meeting, it's not bad.
Two fifteen, two fifteen.
Well, we could, but if, I believe, once we have the public hearing, those fees go into effect.
Right.
Then the other fees that we're talking about will have to be a warrant for the.
No, it's all right, it just take me ten minutes to run across the street, I just need it.
I'd like to make some progress on that.
Okay, well.
Yep, and then, I could. You could also, the next item is discussion of the scenic road application fee, so that doesn't require anything while I'm.
Can I ask, does anybody know what the scenic road application fee is on any other town?
That, I, that wasn't within my search originally, so.
Yes, because we didn't have one, so.
Well, that's a good discussion point.
Well, what?
We could also talk about under.
So I'm gonna go run and get those?
Okay.
Please.
New things.
Thank you.
I could, we could talk about, what we talked about yesterday is where this housing production plan.
Good idea.
Can I take the lead on that?
Please.
If you want, uh, and you jump in, if I have my things wrong, but.
This is part of your meeting on the Affordable Housing Act?
Right, we met just yesterday, just yesterday. It was Tom and Vincent, Richie and me. And Christina was gonna be there, but she had to leave 'cause her kid got sick.
Yeah.
So, so sort of as a background, what we have is this housing production plan that was revised and updated as of November two thousand, November sixteenth, two thousand fifteen, but never submitted to the Department of Housing and Community Development. Okay, which is a regulation we have to comply with, part of Massachusetts General Law forty B and then the C.M.R., the code regulations. We're supposed to have one of these plans active and updated every five years.
Right.
So our one on the record now that's filed with them is from two ten. Okay, so, we had this, this committee that existed in two thousand fifteen, you'd probably recognize the names, which I have here, 'cause they were on the front of the plan, the draft plan. But none of them, they've either left town or resigned, moved on to other things. And Tom is actually, he says, the only one that still was the original member. So, so anyway, sort of my notes. The original two ten plan was put together by the ad hoc subcommittee of the Zoning Board of Appeals. But in two thousand fifteen, there was another, there was a, a regular housing committee established under the purview of the planning board.
Right.
And these were people from the planning board that did the, well, they were, they weren't from the planning board, but it was, the committee was spearheaded by the planning board and they were on their, their own committee appointed and it did have people, a select board member, a zoning board of appeals member, a, a Community Preservation Act member, it had other members. But anyway, since Tom was the only one left on it, he suggested last summer, and they took a vote in June, that the planning board be appointed, June of two thousand eighteen, the planning board be appointed as the new Affordable Housing Committee. But of course, I wasn't on the board then. So now they're gonna go back and try to get me appointed on it, Anne Francois, as the community person. But anyway, so what we, so going through this, I kinda understood the history. So Tom has a redline copy of the two thousand fifteen plan that maybe brings it up to two thousand seventeen. And what I thought, and then, you know, we, that, that plan was compe, was, what's his name, Doug? Richard Heaton, Dick Heaton, yeah, was the consultant on that. So, and then we also had this fifty thousand dollar grant from the CPC that we thought, that is actually dedicated to establishing an affordable housing program. But this is a step in doing that.
Right.
So we can maybe tap into some of those fees to get H and H to help us bring it up to date.
Did they, did you find out whatever happened to the fifty thousand dollar grant?
It's still, it still exists and it needs to be, so here was our action plan. First of all, I gotta get appointed, and that's the twenty first is the next meeting. And then I, we thought there should be, very shortly there have to be an organizational information kind of meeting with this, with the planning board members. And we should post that, because we're now our new committee and invite to attend, you know, the various committees, send a representative if they want, select board, planning board, CONCOMs, E.B.A. And invite Ryan, I guess he wants to come, and then you could put members of the public. But I want to, and I don't mind to be chair, we should elect a chair, I suppose, unless they're gonna appoint me as chair. And, and I would be happy to have somebody else do it, but my thinking is, if we could call this meeting and it's all of us, and I could take care of the posting and stuff, but all of us could read the redline copy, so you knew what, you know, where we stood. And then I could maybe also, ahead of time, talk to Dick Heaton and see, he, you know, the draft exists on his equipment.
Oh, okay.
Right, so whether, how much, for a reasonable fee, could he put, bring it up to date a bit and help us finalize it? We need to contact CPC and make sure that they know that we need that fifty thousand.
Right.
A little bit of it to finish the plan and the rest of it to really launch the plan.
Right.
And I think that we, that should be our short-term goal, is to just get in compliance, you know? And then, but there are some opportunities that people are aware of. Some of the things that they're catching up on are, for example, one of the resources is the, the town tax title properties, you know, if you were gonna look for affordable housing. And that got very far behind because of the scandal with the tax collector a few years ago. And also, I, I, when Christina comes back, we can talk to her, but she thinks, and I think maybe it's with Brian's blessing, that she could sort of be the clerk.
Forgive me, this is actually the motion as it was made, it's better than the, when I found the spreadsheet. This is how it was amended.
Okay.
Based on these things. So this is how the motion read as of our last meeting, so this is what we presented to the public, is what we were going to do.
Okay, give, give Tom another copy and. Anyway, so if we're gonna use Christina, Christina, I'm talking about you, as a help for our Affordable Housing Committee. It was her request that we do it on a Wednesday night. So, because she's available on Wednesday night. So it wouldn't be a Wednesday night, planning board night, it would be a different Wednesday. So I guess the questions I have is, do you, you know, you guys, you, we're the members, as it stands.
Ah, did you need that on again? Okay.
I have it, I'll, I'll open it up in a minute.
Okay, I just wanna warn Francois, 'cause it goes right in his face.
So is, can, are you guys, Tom included, everybody, willing to meet on, we post a meeting on another Wednesday? Either, I would think the date would be, well, I'm gonna probably be appointed if the select board follows its schedule on January twenty first. So it could be Wednesday, January twenty third, if we can get these redline copies out, or Wednesday, February sixth, I'm not gonna be in town.
The sixth?
Um, the last week in January.
We're already having a planning board meeting on the sixth, right?
Yeah.
Well, that's our sixth, so we'd have to bump it one more week after that, or else we have to have it on the twenty third, because the last week's out in January.
I, I certainly respect the select board's process and whatnot, but this is a committee that's formed under the auspices of the planning board. And if by having an earlier meeting, we can get this rolling and get you appointed chairman, I hope, it'd certainly be a motion I would make. And get this rolling, and I have some updated information. Um, and, uh, get this rolling, and I have some updated information that I can present after you're done.
Okay.
It, it's helpful.
Okay.
Why, why can't we post the meeting for the, the Wednesday, the twenty third?
It's fine with me, you wanna do something Wednesday, the twenty third?
That way it falls into perspective with everything and.
I'll try to, I'm not a big believer in long meetings, so we'll try to keep it at two hours at the very most.
Could we make a motion to, uh, um, ask Alice to be the chair, acting chair, I don't hear what we did.
I make a motion that we appoint Alice as chair.
Good idea, uh, I second it.
Alright.
And then we're giving her the authority to pull this meeting together, and, um, after tonight, her fees study should be done. And we can relieve you of a little bit of this planning board stuff, so you have a little more time to, to.
Try to get it done.
Devote to this.
And what time is that meeting, six thirty?
What works for you, Chris, Christina?
That's fine. Six thirty?
Sure. On January twenty third. Okay, 'cause it's gotta be posted, and I'm gonna, so, so I will invite, not invite, but contact and say, would you like to send somebody? I guess invite in that sense.
Yeah, invite, that's fine.
The people that would have to actually sign off on it are the select board, the planning board, and conservation. So I would invite them to send members if they want, what do you think about the ZBA?
I don't know that they have to sign off on it.
Yeah, it does, it's under the stat- in the regulation to submit it, I believe.
But I, I don't know if they'll do it at our meeting, they may have to do it at their own meeting.
Well, that's alright, the question is, do they wanna send a member to, not to be on the affordable housing, but to say, we're having this meeting if you wanna send a member.
Well, if I get this.
They, they are a representative, I believe they'll be designated a representative to the Affordable Housing Committee, and they should come with the authority to sign.
Okay, so, so the, the message going out to them should say, we're looking for members from these committees to be, somebody from your committee to serve on our committee.
I might be contradicting myself, because on the one hand, I say they're a representative to the Affordable Housing Committee, the Affordable Housing Committee is sanctioned under, or, under the auspices of the Planning Board. And they might not be a voting member, so we're gonna figure out if they vote, or if they sign, or what it is they do as a representative.
Well, I, I'm thinking on the short term of just trying to get this plan filed, and then you actually get into putting the plan in action.
Let me help you with that.
When we did it before, years ago when I was on that, and was a member of every com- everybody was a voting member.
Okay.
And that's what we did years before.
Well, we, we constitute the meeting, so we can figure it out, but, uh, the Planning Board, I mean, the Select Board is under, I believe, the false impression. That it's a five-member committee, because there were five planning board members, you know?
Oh.
And they didn't expand, they didn't think about the expansion to include Representative ZBA like we had last time, Mr. Baum, I believe, was.
Mm-hmm. He no longer lives in town, so he won't be here.
Well, I don't know, but, but, uh.
Excuse me, I interrupted, um, we never took a vote on Alice's chair, it was seconded, are we still in discussion with that?
Oh, oh. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, sorry, I didn't mean to.
Oh, no, thank you.
Keeps it in line. I didn't know if we were discussion, that's why I was like, listening at the discussion, wondering if we were still in that, okay.
Here's, here's what I turned up, Alice, and I think you'll be happy about this.
Ah.
I turned up a May fourteenth, two thousand seventeen, planning board, uh, uh, housing, housing collective plan.
Alright.
And, uh.
Submitted.
Yes, revised and updated, submitted, and I'll go down here and I'll tell you, there's Vince Ritchie, he was a, he was a planning board chair and chairman of the Affordable Housing Committee. Baum was from, uh, ZBA.
Yep.
Planning board, planning board, planning board, planning board, planning board, uh, Dennis is, I'm not sure what role he was in there, but he's been a selectman, he's been in everything. And he was there, and Catherine Ritchie was a citizen, and I was a planning board, and there's our administrative clerk. But here's an important paragraph down here, this is not redlined, this is the result of our redlining and Mr. Heaton's redlining.
Okay, so this has been done.
Well, let's go down and see what happened. Here's what it says. The original HPP, I'm reading the bottom paragraph.
Yep.
Was approved by those guys in Boston in two thousand ten, and expired in fifteen.
Yeah.
So the revised and updated plan was approved by the Housing Committee on April fourteenth, two thousand sixteen, the Planning Board on September seventh, sixteen. And the Board of Selectment on sixteen. Uh, copy was reviewed and technically approved by Mr. Di Martino, Technical Assistant Coordinator, Office of Sustainability, in seventeen. And as suggested by Di Martino, changes were made, his, his report is in addendum eleven, and it's attached to this. Final approval was provided by the Planning Board on February sixth, seventeen, and by the Selectmen on February sixth, seventeen.
Great.
And I have a May fourteenth, seventeen document that was a letter. From the Chairman of our Select Board. I found this. Uh, in my file, in my electronic file, and, um, I think this document is all done, except for the stamp on the envelope. And I wanna show you, um.
The Town of Hubbardson's request, DHCD approved the housing plan as revised in May of seventy, copy of plan submitted. To this Di Martino, who's a technical guy, and he provided comments to the town that have been incorporated.
So this is all set.
Here is his letter. From Phil Di- I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, so why, if that's a letter from the Select Board, why wasn't it sent?
Well, I don't, I don't know the exact status, because we gotta go over to the Select Board and say, what happened to that letter?
Probably was sent.
Show me a signed copy and what went where.
Right.
But that's as close as I can get to it.
Right.
So here's Mr. Di Martino's letter in January two thousand seventeen, he's reviewed it, everything looks in order. He adds a couple things, makes a couple revisions, and, um. It looks like the Planning Board approves it back in September sixteen, any questions, let me know. Signed, Phil.
Wow.
So I think.
So why when Christina called them, did they say they didn't have it?
Well, I don't know, they might not have it. I see a letter, I don't see it signed.
It shows that they're expired, yeah.
I don't see it, you know, I think we have to do what we're doing, resurrect it, find out what the heck happened, and if they don't have it, get it to them. But I don't think it requires all this review process.
Yeah, that'd be great.
I think we're almost done.
Just a few little tees to cross and i's to dot and.
Deal do you want?
I don't even think it's that, because I wouldn't know which tees or i's that got it wrong.
I think it went in and it has a disclaimer, disclaimer and.
I would leave it alone. If he's, if he already said, looks good.
It already went for review, so I never, that might be their problem.
Then if it gets stamped two thousand seventeen, we're good to twenty-two.
Or we say, sorry, we didn't get this to you earlier, here's the nineteen version, count this as the nineteen version, we're good to twenty-four.
And we start. You can get away with, well, this seems like it was submitted.
Well, I'm not trying to get away with any of it.
Not even if, if you can just have them acknowledge, is what I wanna say, the seventeen one.
Yeah.
That would be nice.
But this looks better than we talked about yesterday.
Much better.
I, uh.
Much better, 'cause if that's a submission date.
Then it's really almost all set.
You've got, you've got a few years before we have to reinvent the.
We still need to meet, we still need to form this committee, because we have things to do that are beyond, we have, we have to figure out how to implement.
Right.
This plan, which is a great starting point, and, um, I think, do everything you said you were gonna do.
Okay.
And, plus one more, check with the Selectmen, where did this report go?
Yeah. And check with DHCD, and why aren't we?
Well, I wouldn't go there first, I would go to Laurie and get the Selectman's signature on something and say, oh, this, this went. Now, I have this.
Do I have a copy of the other letter, all of them?
Oh, this Dick Heaton, the gentleman that was, he lives in Bolton.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yeah, he was a good worker, he.
Yeah, you, you.
He certainly gave us our money's worth, he was.
Well, he did.
He was.
It's a wonderful report.
Kind to us. Um, and maybe we'll employ him again, uh. I don't have evidence of this, but we have fifty thousand dollars from, well, I have evidence of the fifty thousand dollars, it was a town warrant article in two thousand sixteen. Article twenty-five, I think.
Yeah.
Authorized this, but it got broken down somehow into ten thousand dollars worth of administrative effort, which is what we hired Mr. Heaton for. And, uh, paid our clerk and whatnot, and then forty thousand dollars to actually go out and find affordable housing opportunities. And, uh, there are a few in town.
Has, has the, the work on that one property, where they were doing title and, out of that, been paid for out of the forty?
Yes.
Out of the forty, so there's not forty left?
Well, it was fifty.
It was fifty, ten was.
There may very well be forty left for implementation.
Okay, so in the minist- administration, it wasn't all Dick.
There is all fifty, fifty is still there.
Some fraction, yeah.
Fifty is still there, she said.
All fifty is still there.
Okay, then we paid for it out of the other money that we had from the canceled affordable housing, uh, facilities in Madison Green and Moosehorn.
Okay, well, I do think we should write the CPC and tell them we're active and.
And, and CPC gave us a smaller amount of money in a prior year, I forget what that was, five thousand.
It isn't listed on there, printout from the state website.
Alright, well, you're, you're digging into the books, right?
I am.
And so we'll let Christina dig into the books and come back with the report, but I don't think money's the issue. The issue is, where is this report and what do we do next?
Right.
I think it's hopeful.
I think it's very hopeful, if we can move on to the next step, it would be.
I was really happy to find this.
And can we have the, that file for the, um.
Oh, sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, I will, I will deliver a thumb tomorrow with all this stuff on it, I have it in PDF and I have it in Word.
You have that in Word?
Yes.
Well, there you go.
Well, I, we're not gonna change it.
No.
But it's changeable.
Yeah, but if you could, if I'm gonna call my media, I'm gonna ask people to read it ahead of time, somebody's gotta duplicate it and hand it out, that's the one that should be handed out.
Right.
I didn't wanna make copies of the other one until I showed you.
Ah, exactly, yeah.
Makes sense, and, um, uh.
It's great news.
Rather than hand it out, we might just post it, uh, on our website, and everybody can go in and, if they, if they prefer to read it on screen, it's on screen.
Read it on Word.
If they can download it to their eBooks or whatever they wanna do, they can do anything they want with it.
Is that alright with you, are you guys willing to read this on a screen, or you wanna paper copy?
Oh, they can print it out.
No, I can read it, that's.
I can read it.
That's probably gotta copy this at home.
I think you probably do.
Really?
Well, these aren't, you know, this is two years ago.
I know. I know.
Lot of water's gone over the dam.
I know, I, I'm thrilled at the.
Yeah.
Yeah, to be able to move along, we'll start analyzing.
You got a running start.
Yeah, big running start.
Now, you can cut that Wednesday meeting down to one hour instead of two.
Yes, easily.
Perfect.
Good. Alright, well, do we need, need a motion on any of this, folks?
Well, I think we need a couple motions, um, I wanna backtrack a little bit. Ryan always says, take a vote, when you come to me, if you don't have a vote, you haven't done your job, so I wanna do my job. I want a motion to bring to Ryan the town-to-town comparison tool. I'm not presenting an answer, I'm presenting the tool, so I would like the board to either say, move to Ryan with that, or that's a lousy idea, bury it.
I'd like the idea.
And defer to move it to Ryan. So I'd, I, I'd like a motion on moving that, I'd like a motion on, what do we do with these guidelines? And then I think we need a motion to, oh, we already made the chairman, right?
I'll try to sort it out, if you get me the documents.
Okay, then I will move the documents, we don't need a motion to do that.
Save the night, I'll post it and I'll copy you, or I'll get Christina, we'll post it.
Put the twenty-third, already in my, I'm already set.
I already have it on there. You guys are way ahead of us, Alice.
I'll make a motion to, I.
I'm sorry, real quick, Alice, um, have we checked the website to make sure that there's nothing else in this room at that time?
No.
Okay, I'm just, otherwise I.
Well, we don't have to meet in this room.
Oh, okay.
We can.
No, we could meet elsewhere if it's a small, okay.
If it's taken by somebody.
Right, I'll make a motion that we post. I can't think what I wanna say now, the control of the commercial buildings.
The guidelines.
The guidelines, those guidelines on our website, and utilize them as a, as we just talked about.
Design guidelines.
There's a guideline for people to look at, to have this information available when they come in on our forums, um, do you folks want, on that. Spirit of that is, that motion, do you wanna add in, you wanna add anything to our checklist that people have to have that information, or just use the guidelines?
It's a start.
So I just make, my motion is to just post it on our website as guidelines.
Two postings, there's the thing I did tonight, which is the seven-slide short version.
Mm-hmm.
And then there's the whole document with text and explanations of their zoning laws and all this stuff, so I'll post both of those things. If it's okay with you, or do you want just the slideshow?
I think the seven phonologies for a start, so I'd rather really read that before we put it on, personally, before we put it on our website, is, does that sound okay?
The one that the pictures were at, the design standard.
Yeah, I want, I'd like the pictures, I thought they looked really well, and that'll be our first kickstart to get it posted. This is our guidelines, and this may be look and then adapt it, instead of have Northborough's names in there.
Well, sure.
We can do ours, but I'd like to read it first.
I also think I oughta call Northborough and say, I'm using your document.
Yeah, that's.
It's gotta be a public document.
Right.
You know, but I don't know if they want us to copy it or give them credit or something, I'd be glad to give them credit, they did a great job.
Right.
So, motion, uh, seconded?
Second.
I don't know what this motion said.
The motion is, post the design guideline slideshow as presented tonight.
On the website, as a guideline.
As something that our planning board's considering?
Yes, information for the public.
An inviting comment?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just as a guideline, it's not binding.
Remember, if we make any change to a bylaw, we have to have public hearings anyway.
Right.
That's, that's not gonna, there's nothing gonna be happening behind the curtain here, we're putting it out as concept.
I think it's great for information for folks, and it's not, we can't tell anybody, this is what you have to do yet, it's just, gets it out there. Just like we did with the scenic road, road and all of that, and the stone walls.
And eventually.
Yeah, I, I think more information is good for people, uh, but we're not telling them, this is what you gotta do by the standard or the code yet, so.
We also oughta rope Bill Murray into this discussion, he's got a lot of experience with other towns, and he might be able to help us with, what do you have to do? You know, the, the process of guiding people, designing guides, you know, design guidelines. Anyway, post, post the seven-slide thing, seconded?
Motion. Guidelines, you seconded it?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I will get it to you, Christina.
We do need a follow-up meeting where we make them our guidelines and we.
Oh, it's gonna take months.
Right, right.
Okay.
Second one was the comparative town benchmarking tool. My thought was I would go to Ryan and say, here's the concept, and he's getting three or four other concepts from other boards.
Yeah.
Stir them in and see what he comes up with.
So we can motion that our board, um, authorize our chair to present, what do you call that tool?
Benchmarking.
Benchmarking, using the data from the state as, uh, a form of guiding development in the town.
To initiate the process.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, then the third motion was about the affordable housing, I don't think we need a motion, I think we need to get, we to pull that thing together and.
Yeah, yeah, try to pull it together and see where it goes.
I'll give you the documents and, and we're all, we're in a much better place than we were yesterday, I think.
We are, but I needed all the background to understand it, so I'm glad I came to the meeting, I mean.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, but great, but that's fabulous news, so will you get the copy to me?
I will do whatever you want me to do.
The, uh, of the plan that's been approved.
I have the Word version and the PDF version of the same thing.
You've called it a meeting three times, just to be clear for anyone listening, there was no quorum there, sorry, I just wanted to make sure that for the video.
Right, right, it was a meeting, informational session.
A meeting, and I wanna make sure that they understand it was, there was no quorum there at that meeting, right, so, citing that for the record.
Oh, you mean yesterday's meeting?
Yesterday's, you kept calling it a meeting, but it wasn't.
Yeah, there was only two, two members present.
Exactly, I just wanna make sure that that got stated, so no one's like, where, where's the meeting?
Right, right.
Right, right.
From yesterday, that's all.
Thanks for doing that, that keeps us, keeps us straight.
Nope, it's alright.
Which is easier for you to just, to, to take, if you were to take this document and then distribute it to our, you know, the, the, the two thousand seventeen version.
Mm-hmm.
To get it out to all of us, do you want it in PDF or?
PDF is good, I, I, I would appreciate the copy of the Word file too, only because, uh, I'd like to look at the copyrights on it. Because if you guys have to redo this in five years, I'd like to put it in a place where you guys can go into it and with minimal input, edit it and recreate it yourself, as opposed to having to.
You'll, you'll get both versions.
Spend it, but yeah, the PDF I would, I, I tend to like to print PDFs, because that's how they wanted it to be seen, so. Spend it, but yeah, the PDF I would, I, I tend to like to print PDFs because that's how they wanted it to be seen, so I just.
Well, we shouldn't submit anything to anybody that isn't a PDF.
Right.
We shouldn't let out our Word versions.
Mm-hmm.
Cause see.
Right. S- so, if she gets it out in electronic form to all of us and to Francois?
Yep.
Is that satisfactory to do?
I can also do hard copy.
Paper copy?
I can do both.
I just want email.
If I may, uh, now that I have the email, uh, with the, uh, the official email.
Mm-hmm.
I believe I can receive the emails at any size that was a problem before.
Okay, send it.
Yeah, email's great for me, I just wanna read it on the screen.
Does everyone want a paper copy so that they can reference it or no?
You can print your own paper copy if you want.
Right.
Have, have, at the meeting.
Yep.
Have a few paper copies available, maybe three or for our guests and our, but we'll send the website too, I mean, the, our site.
I don't mind making one for the entire board, that way they have it if they want it, that's not an issue, I can print out.
It has to be color, there's a lot of color maps and stuff in the back, so that's over here at this machine, you can use it.
Okay.
It's shared between the senior center and the town.
Okay.
Uh, town offices, ask, ask Laurie or somebody, but.
We can work out the details, I'll be in touch.
I was about to say, do they all, cuz printing the whole thing in color, if I had to do three or four pages, that's.
Probably just do the last ones in color.
Yeah, it's like the last.
Oh, yeah, you can.
The last five pages of the maps, that's what has to be in color.
Okay.
Or I'll go down to Staples and just press print.
That's expensive.
It is, it's expensive.
So, and the last thing, we still have to approve our changes in our fees here.
We do.
Yeah, it's up to you, Catherine, uh.
So, this is what we have, which is not elegant, but it is accurate. Um, and I, because we have to have a public hearing, I mean, there's no public here except Francois.
We're operating in public.
But.
And, and it was posted as a public hearing.
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
So, we're fine, we're fine.
Public sitting right there?
Yeah, well.
The public could've showed up, they were notified.
If they wanted to show up, they would've been there.
Everything we do is public.
Do you think we could get away with a motion that says, um, I move that the planning, the planning board approve the fees?
Listing on this motion.
Um, do you know what date this was?
Yes, this is from the, I have it here, the December fifth meeting.
Always that date again?
December fifth.
Thank you.
This is from the December fifth.
Approve the fees. Having given the, an opportunity of a public hearing, that we now take the steps of approving the fees, which we preliminarily approved on December fifth. Which raises the, increases the fee, planning board fees for A and R plans, preliminary plans, definitive plans. Um, and documents. To, uh, be adjusted.
Can I go for a suggestion?
Yeah.
On the top of this paper, there's a motion.
Yep.
Said I moved that the planning board, all the public hearing to do this. Can we just move now that the planning board approve the below-listed fees?
Yes, but there are two motions here.
Well.
Did they approve, okay.
Do one at a time.
So, I moved that the planning board, um.
We approve.
Approve the. Amend the provisions of the rules and regulations governing the subdivision of land in Hubbardston, Massachusetts to incorporate the fees where, that were.
Fees listed below.
Yeah, and previously approved on December fifth, two thousand nineteen.
The previous approval doesn't matter.
Okay.
The only, only thing that matters is we're doing this now in a public hearing.
Right, cuz that's why we posted it.
Do you want to read them out?
That'd be fine.
Alright, at two, alright, so scratch the former motion and let me try to do this right. I move that the planning board amend the rules and regulations governing the subdivision of land in Hubbardston, Massachusetts as they relate to fees. Specifically, section four oh, four point zero one, to increase the submittal fee for a plan believed not to require. Approval from one hundred and seventy-five dollars to two hundred and fifty dollars. Amend section five point oh one to increase the filing fee for submission of a preliminary subdivision plan from twenty-five dollars a lot to. Thirty-five dollars a lot with a hundred and fifty dollar minimum. And amend section six to increase the filing fee for submission of a definitive plan from two hundred to two hundred and fifty. Or, uh, from two hundred and fifty dollars a lot to three hundred and fifty dollars a lot with a fifteen hundred dollar minimum. This, wait, how does this read?
No, you did it right, you had crossed out things and you read them correctly.
Okay. So, that's the motion for the, that we have to take separately because there, the rules and regulations were amending.
It was open.
So, I make that motion to.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Christina, do you have that straight?
I do.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah, I'm very off the paper, so.
Yeah, and I will be reviewing the video, I always do that for the verbatims.
Right, right.
Uh, and the second motion, we combined two things. Uh, so, I moved that the planning board pursuant to Article nine point two of the Town of Hubbardston zoning bylaws. Increase the filing fee for a site plan review submission from one hundred and fifty dollars to two hundred and twenty-five dollars. And increase the filing fee for a special permit application from one hundred and fifty dollars to two hundred and twenty-five dollars.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good job, Alice and Christina, thank you.
And we have one more to do.
All of these.
One more topic, you mean?
No, uh.
I combined these.
Scenic roads application fee. We haven't done that stuff.
Wasn't part of our original.
We, uh, have to investigate what other towns do and Alice is gonna come back to us.
Oh, okay.
She's the.
I guess though it was on the bottom of our.
She's the toll collector in, in this committee.
We don't have a present fee to adjust by the cost.
But you could look at other.
But I will see what would be inappropriate.
To be clear, these are all effective immediately.
Correct.
Okay, so any A and Rs that have been, that are, that come in or are being submitted.
Does that have to be approved at town meeting or now we have it open in meetings, that, that legal?
You should revise the town, the planning board website.
Yes.
So that the public is.
Notified.
Well, they're notified as of tonight, but this is not gonna be viewed by an applicant, they're gonna come in the front door, you know, you gotta put it on the.
Right, right.
Also, make sure the clerk gets a copy.
I will.
Because when I went to Joyce to find out what our fees were, she did have.
A little copy.
She does have a, a box with fees for everything in town, so she needs to know.
Now, with regards to the fi- the former fees, they did have the administrative fee at the bottom, fifteen percent administrative fee will be added to the engineering costs related to these transactions.
Where is that in the?
That was on the original fees, um, schedule.
Oh.
Near the bottom, I didn't know if that was something we were going to.
I'd like a motion to maintain the administrative fee as originally applied, is that appropriate?
That's what we charge now, cuz I didn't see that on that.
Or let, let's just say, make a motion that there's no change to the administrative fee.
The administrative fee, as far as I'm, I do, I know, has never been applied, and it says to engineering costs related to these transactions, which means I guess, um.
Bill Murray.
Bill Murray, so anytime Bill Murray comes in, um, we charge fifteen percent above what Bill Murray does. Um, as a fee applied to the, um, planning board.
Yeah, if he charges a hundred bucks, we charge the applicant a hundred and fifteen.
Okay.
And that's what we've always charged.
I'm not certain that we've always done that, but that's what we're doing.
But that was on the fees dated two thousand.
That's what we're gonna do from now on.
I make a motion that we keep that, we keep that online.
Administrative fee.
Seconded?
Seconded.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Look here, I sit near you, you don't even get these hands up.
It doesn't need to be adjusted, cuz that'll automatically adjust, fifteen percent of it.
They're right there all day today's skin, get their hands up.
Keep it some. Uh, matter's not reasonably anticipated by the chair, two things, the town warrant is open. Uh, Ryan announced that Monday at the, uh, Select Board meeting, so if we going, if we are intending to make anything. Change to a bylaw or change to something that requires, uh, town meeting vote. Then we'll have to do it pretty promptly. Second thing is, um, I received a email today with an article from the Worcester Sunday Telegram of January sixth. Um, soil, let's see if they can get this one. I think you gotta turn, turn it to this camera, left, to your left a little. Oh, last time it was that one, but anyway. Uh, soil fill owner, operator, each fined sixty-five thousand dollars. This is down in Uxbridge and he, uh, this landfill type operation is bringing soil in from. I believe various sources in the eastern end of the state. They're operating under what the, um, Department of Environmental Protection calls a administrative consent order, I think. It's called ACO. And, um, these things can come into a town with, uh, very little public scrutiny. And, um, ability to hold it back once certain hurdles are gotten over. And Uxbridge has suffered, I think, at the hands of these, uh, hand of the owner and operator. And, uh, they did not, the article states that they didn't, uh, comply with the administrative consent order and now they're being fined. We took steps, we, the Town of Hubbardston, had the benefit of a law that we put on the bylaw, general bylaws. To prohibit the importation of this kind of material. And, uh, Mark Dimick did that through a citizen's petition. And, um, it, it, uh, was overwhelmingly approved by the, by the town meeting vote. I forget the numbers, but it was most of everybody to eight or something like that, you know? And this article just points out the tremendous problems Uxbridge is going through. And I believe Southbridge has similar problems at a, at a legal landfill. And I'm just so happy we have that bylaw sitting there. This is, is potentially, uh, affecting an aquifer and, you know, the problems go on and on. And these fines, sixty-three thousand dollars, doesn't buy anything. And they don't say whether the illegally or the inappropriately deposited material gets removed. They just say they pay a fine. You can't really do much with money when you have a, when you have a contaminated aquifer. Water doesn't behave to property lines or town lines or anything, it goes where it goes, you know, underground. So, I'm just really happy we did this, uh, a couple of years ago. And that law really needs to be, uh, respected. And I think it has been, I've not heard of anything bring, coming into town other than, um, a material that's put on farmers' fields. It's a mixture of what they call short paper fiber and sewage sludge.
Yeah.
It's a treatment, it's an amendment, I think they call it.
Mm-hmm.
And that's, that's going on around town and that's.
It comes through the Board of Health.
Yes.
We have to approve that.
Yeah, through a couple of companies that import that material, but that is not this stuff.
No.
This stuff is mercury and exavelling chrome and all the bad guys.
That's all approved by the DEP too.
What is?
DEP approves that process for the.
You mean the fertilizer process?
Correct.
Yeah, I won't call it fertilizer, it's an amendment, but, um, uh, this is also endorsed by the DEP.